Thank you and good evening and welcome everyone to the Select Board Meeting of July 14th, 2021. Please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
The Republic.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Justice.
For all.
Thank you, everyone. We have a lot on our agenda this evening. We're going to have public comment, but before we get to public comment, I just want to discuss the agenda and with the consent of our members of the board here, I think we will defer the executive session items. One of them is not ready and we have another meeting on the 20th and then another on the 28th. So if that's agreeable to everyone, we'll defer the executive session and we'll end after community happenings. Okay, so no objection. We'll go on to public comment. Do we have anyone this evening would like to address the board of public comment? And I will remind you that we're going to limit public comment to three minutes as we usually do. Please raise your hand and we will recognize you. And if you're on the telephone, I believe it is star six to raise your hand or to notify us that you'd like to speak. I see one hand raised, Cindy Christensen. And actually, that reminds me, I should have mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, let me do that now, that tonight's meeting is being held remotely by Zoom in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. And the members of the board who are present are Vice Chair Arthur Doyle, Secretary Mike Zulus, Melinda Collins, Richard Wells, and our time Administrator Michael Dennehy, and also Suzanne Stewart, our Executive Administrative Assistant. The meeting is being recorded by Milton Access Television and by Cindy Christensen. Okay, public comment. We have Cindy Christensen, please.
Hi. This is Cindy Christensen. I live at 59 Collimer Street. This week, Boston Fair Skies was one of 62 organizations from across the country that asked the FAA and the Next Gen Advisory Committee to hold meetings on community engagement and to include not only FAA and industry Next Gen Advisory Committee members, but also include a wide range of stakeholders from impacted communities. The national group that I helped to establish Aviation Impacted Communities Alliance has asked members of the Congressional Quiet Skies Caucus to follow up on this 62 organization request when they meet with Administrator Dixon tomorrow. We expect full support. These actions were prompted by others and my participation in the recent Next Gen Advisory Committee meeting. Our messages during that meeting were picked up by the editor of the Airport Noise Report who used our Aviation Impacted Communities Alliance White Paper in her July 2nd, 2021 publication. This is now the second time that the Airport Noise Report has given us excellent exposure to the FAA advisors and decision makers on the Next Gen Advisory Committee. What are we doing next? We have asked the leaders of the 62 organizations that co-signed our letter to contact their FAA District Ombudsman to request that the stakeholders from impacted communities are included in the Next Gen Advisory Committee meetings on public engagement. On another topic, the University of Washington has teamed up with researchers and activists from across the country and will be holding their second summit this Saturday to discuss aviation problems, ideas for solutions, and next steps. I will be speaking at that summit and leading one of the breakout group discussions. I encourage Milton to work on his airplane problems at the national level. We have seen the dysfunction of the Massport Community Advisory Committee and the Logan CAC before that. I also encourage you to ask the Logan Air Traffic Controllers to split the approaches to 4R between 4R and 4L. It is the fair thing to request if this board cares about its East Milton residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at Citizen Speak? I see no other hands raised. So we will now move on to our next agenda item, which is a report and an update on the East Milton Deck Project by representatives of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Howard Stein Hudson, and I believe also McKay Construction. So we have represented those three organizations with us and I'm told that Ms. Galvin will lead off the discussion.
Yep, I'm going to run the deck and my colleague Hillary will be giving the presentation.
Okay, and thank you all for joining us this evening. We'll we'll watch your presentation and the members of the board may have some questions or comments after the presentation. Thank you, Ms. Galvin.
Perfect. Thank you so much. This is Hillary Jennison. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity tonight to update the Select Board and residents on the progress of the East Milton Deck and roadway improvement project. I'm Hillary Jennison of Dot Joyce Consulting and I'm joining us consulting and I'm joined by my colleague Brenna Galvin. We are supporting the Mastat team and public outreach for this project in coordination with McKay Construction. We have several members of the team joining us tonight. From Mastat, we have area engineer Juan Taveras and resident engineer Laura Montiel and government and public affairs Dan Fielding. Bridget Myers, Jared Height, and Chris Melch from Howard Stein Hudson are engineering and design consultants, as well as Mike Melvin and Kyle Anudo from McKay Construction. They will all be available for questions after the presentation. Tonight, we will walk you through a brief overview of the project from what has been done, where we are now in construction schedule, and what everyone can expect from us as we move into the fall. As many of you know, the plan was developed with the intention to repave all roadways to accommodate a multimodal transportation network for the safety of pedestrians, cyclists, and improve traffic flow. This project will provide improvements along Adams Street, Granite Ave, Bryant Ave, Boulevard Street, Edge Hill Road, and Bassett Street, including modifying lane widths to make room for bike lanes, replacing all traffic signals, and updating signal timing to improve traffic flow, all while reconstructing the existing curbing and sidewalks. The final project will be the beautification and activation of the park and bridge deck reconstruction, allowing for revitalized village green in the heart of East Milton Square. This is a significant construction project in the main commercial commuter district of town, and as such, the plan for this work has gone through significant large project review that includes every level of government from federal, state, and local authorities, and in some cases, multiple layers of agency and departmental reviews and approvals. The good news is that we are now finally seeing an end in sight and as we move forward toward the completion of Phase Three this fall. As we enter the final phase of the sidewalk and median reconstruction work, we are optimistic that the community will see the new improvements that have taken place so far as we've completed Phases One and Two of the project. Our project team has worked hard during COVID to get the work outside of businesses completed as much as possible to ensure that they can reopen at full capacity. Moving forward, we'll work to continue with our neighbors to work with our neighbors to ensure that they have the most timely information. I'm now going to turn it over to McKay Construction, who will provide the details on the improvements that will be made as we enter into the final roadway phase of this project and what everyone can expect in terms of possible disruptions to daily business over the next several weeks.
Kyle.
I don't know if someone might be muted.
Is it Mr. Anudo? Because he was just off mute and now he's back on mute.
Yes, it's Kyle Anudo.
Kyle, can you take yourself on mute, off of mute?
Can't hear you, Kyle.
Sorry, hold on one second while I try and get Kyle off of mute. Let's see. It looks like he's off of mute, but we don't, I still can't hear him. Can anyone else hear him?
No.
I cannot. It does look like he's off mute and his microphone is moving up and down at times. I see Mike there as well, Mike Melvin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Kyle.
It's Mike Melvin.
Oh, hi, Mike.
Hey, how are you?
Walk us through these.
Yeah, so we're in the thick of Phase Three right now. We're kind of hitting ramp A pretty hard right now with the demolition of the slab. We're hoping to have sidewalk reconstructed in that area hopefully within the next three weeks. We've had a little delay in the bridge curb necessary for that reconstruction. But we're hoping to see that at the end of next week. So the demolition will continue through the rest of this week. And then we may move on to the Boulevard section over I-93 with the demo and reconstruction of the curb. And followed shortly thereafter by the CND areas over by the fire station. Couple minor issues with the island, I think we'll have resolved soon. In that we're hoping to be out of Phase Three by the end of the summer, early fall. Obviously dependent on a few things, but we're fairly confident we're going to be done with Phase Three by mid-September, which would put us on par to start reconstruction of Phase Four early fall.
Okay, Hillary, we can just move on to the recent improvements.
Sure, sure. So as you may have noticed, there are significant traffic coming and public safety improvements happening around the post office and travel between Bryant Avenue and Edge Hill Road. Prior to construction vehicle prior to construction, vehicles were able to enter Edge Hill Road from Bryant Ave without significantly slowing down from their previous travel speed. The skewed intersection and triangular median that separated out both lanes of traffic forced pedestrians to cross the road in two phases without any signalization. This increases increased the chances for potential of accidents with cars and cyclists. Now both Edge Hill Road and Boulevard are one-way traffic patterns, which lessens the potential for these types of accidents. Edge Hill Road will also contain a sidewalk bumpout to help protected parked vehicles lessen the crossing distance for pedestrians, increasing safety at the crossings. Additionally, an off-road bike path at the corner of the post office will allow cyclists to travel more safely along Bryant Ave and create a safe, separated crossing to and from East Milton Square Park. The new design provides updates to the sidewalks, pedestrian crossings, crossings, and signal equipment to meet current ADA compliance. Finally, truck traffic will be restricted from Edge Hill Road, but the MPTA bus route 235 will still be running down that route. The new design has been analyzed to ensure safe bus travel from Bryant Ave to Edge Hill Road. If you have any questions or concerns regarding this project or you'd like to sign up for updates, you can visit the website located here. And now I'm going to turn it over to the team for any questions. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no one else from your team to speak then. You're ready for comments and questions from the board? All right, do any of my colleagues wish to ask any questions or offer any comments? Ms. Collins.
Thank you for the presentation. I was just wondering, I was going back through some of previous materials that we'd received. Are there things left over from Phase One and Phase Two? Are those complete at this point? Are we just working on three?
Mike, we'll let you take that one.
Yeah, there is a few open items on Phase One and Two. Obviously, the existing signals are still active and they're until the new system is up and running, those have to stay remain in place. So some of the sidewalks haven't been completed 100% mainly due to that factor. But for the most part, it's complete with a few minor areas to be completed in the fall.
Ms. Collins.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify and make sure I understand. So things like sidewalks that might not be finished from these earlier two phases can't be completed until the lights are operational. That's what it sounds like. Is that correct?
That's correct. The existing foundations need to be removed. The lights need to come down. And then the sidewalk can be completed once those existing lights are removed.
Okay, and that sounds like that's mid-September.
The lights probably will be towards the end of the fall. Working on getting the new services to the four locations right now with our subcontractor. That's in the process. Obviously, you've seen some some mast arms are up and a lot of the equipment is in. Most of the conduit, I would say 75% of the conduit or around the project is in. And then as soon as we can start taking down existing equipment, we will finish the finish the sidewalks in those areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So two points. One, the first one is on the, this was brought to me by one of the DPW operators two weeks ago. The new bumpout at the intersection of Bryant and Edge Hill where it goes up. They have some of the more veteran operators have some concerns about the harsh winters we get and plowing that. It's a very odd turn and it'll be very difficult to plow it to the point that even one of them had concerns and I could see where they're coming from that one really harsh winter may actually kind of do that in. So I wonder what your thoughts are regarding that, understanding the winters that we do have here. It's not July all year round. My second point is one that I'm beleagoring. I brought up several times, I met with Doc Joyce, I brought up before this board and I brought up to Bridget as well. In the July of 2019 presentation that came before us, the northwest corner that you gave to us had included a pavilion, which is one of the things that both the 25 and 50% comment period people had asked repeatedly about, particularly the Chamber of Commerce, Bill Nance Center, some of the residents. Representative Driscoll has just secured $100,000 towards that. You had given us a potential price of $200,000. I don't want to see this have to be added at the end. And I've asked repeatedly if we could, you gave us an outward design and you've given us a price of $200,000. Could you at least give us, one, some concepts of what this could look like? So that we can discuss it and at least have some community input on it. And two, and I don't think it'd be very hard for us to raise the additional $200,000. If we had to do this the next couple of months, could you give us a timeline that this could be included during the phases of construction that currently outlined? I see right now, according to your diagrams, it shows a forested tree area. Hey, number one, I don't think anyone on this board wants to be cutting down trees to build a pavilion. And number two, we would like as a community to have this all done at once, even though I understand we're raising the $200,000 to do. Don't be quick to answer.
On your first question, I'll defer to Howard Stein Hudson to talk about the design of the bumpout.
Everyone, Bridget Myers, Howard Stein Hudson. For the design at Edge Hill, I know it was brought up during the presentation about the safety aspects of why that was done. We did, I know we did you know, run our turning templates for the, you know, trucks and buses that need to make this movement and there were no issues there. But you know, we could discuss further about just no removal, but you know, there wasn't a specific issue that had been brought up.
Did you think about it at all?
We do take that into account, especially if it's if it's something that's specifically brought up. There is the parking area over there and the parking is going to be moved to the west, west side. So there'll be area on the east side of Edge Hill now where there won't be parking. And that could be used for for snow as well.
I just think it's a very awkward for particularly some of the large equipment that we use and sure Mr. Dennehy can understand this, that's a very difficult turn and angle to clear snow from. I get the safety aspects of it, but with 10 or 20 to snowstorms that we often get, I understand their concern that you could knock this right out, you know, one clip from either a large machine or a large.
Ms. Myers, did you have anything else?
I'm not on that. On the pavilion. I know, yeah, we did that did come up more recently and there is the space for it. So there wouldn't need to be any, even if it was completed, there wouldn't need to be any, you know, removal of any trees to get that in there. So we can, you know, bring that up again to the landscape architect. And they were the ones that had the initial concept and rough, you know, cost for that.
So I'm not going to let this go. Bridget, you've known me a long time. I'm like, this is, this is important. And so you've gave us a chat, you said we couldn't include it, so we've raised half the money already. You gave us, and Doc gave me an idea of 200, that it was a $200,000 project. We just need something, A, that we as a board can look at and discuss and weigh in on and bring the community on. And B, as to what phase we could do this in to make sure that this is part of the overall project because as I just stated previously, this is something that both the 25 and the 50 that, as you know, many people weighed in, wanted to see something happen. I think that one thing that we've learned as a board here and one thing COVID has taught us is that our outside areas are now vital and critical more than they've ever been. So and I think they all expect it. They're expecting something like this to happen. So we don't want to leave this behind.
And that'll definitely involve some coordination with contractor and Mastat too, once we have that. Find out, you know, when during destruction that could happen.
All right, thank you. Bridget, I see Mike Dunne, he has his hand up. I don't know if it's on this specific point. Mr. Dunne?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, a little bit more on that bumpout from the post office. I think it's worth letting the public know and Bridget, you can elaborate on this. That is a very tight corner currently as the construction proceeds. But I think the public needs to know that that will be widened. The piece of Bryant Avenue that abuts the deck will be the plans and drawings that were designed has that pushed in towards the park, not only to accommodate better vehicular traffic making that corner, but also restoring the parking lots on Bryant Avenue at the deck that are currently unusable due to construction. So I think that's that's a point that needs to be reiterated because I'm not sure if the board has, we've received several phone calls at Town Hall about how tight that corner is during the current construction process. But Bridget, if you could just elaborate on that, it may alleviate some of member Wells's concern about negotiating that corner so tightly to the new bumpout.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, and the final condition, that area of Bryant Ave is shifted a couple feet towards the deck. So that lane line will not be, you know, exactly where it is today. It'll be a little further back. So the lane will be wider than it is today between the curb and the other side of the lane for cars to make that turn. I mean, they will, I mean, the point is to slow cars down as they're making that turn. So that is part of the design as well, but it will not be as, you know, tight as it is right now in, you know, interim condition.
Mr. Wells, anything else?
Oh, I just, Bridget, I really, I'm going to wait two weeks and for the reporters who are on, you can call me if you don't. I can give you two weeks if you could get Mr. Dennehy in the chair, some type of concept as to what could be, you know, built there. I know that the original plan just gave a rectangular, but I've seen some of the other things that were built by the landscaping contract there and I'm sure you could come up with something. As I say, you gave us a figure of 200,000. I think the board would all appreciate, A, what it would look like, you know, for 200, how so we could help shape it. And I think sooner versus later, it's going to be Christmas. As we learn on this board, we're planning for Christmas already here. Summer's already over. So I'd really appreciate if you could explain this to Mr. Dennehy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Before we go to Mr. Doyle next, could I ask either Milton Access Television or Susie Stewart? We have Mr. Anudo, who is now in the attendee list, looks like by telephone, and he had trouble speaking earlier. If we could move him up to participant. And if there's anyone else that is not needed for this session, we can move from participant to panelist to attendee and then we'll, we will get to them. Mr. Doyle. we will get to them. Uh, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we're very, very familiar with the scenario, but there are those who maybe watching who are not, and I was wondering if it might be possible when references are made to specific locations, if the appropriate plan could be put up so that people could follow them. Point number one, my second and final point at this point in time is that that curb at the post office going up Edge Hill Road, even with widening on the lefty inside eventually, is pretty difficult. But this may say more about me than anything else, but fifty percent of the time I go around that corner, I have to curb it.
Okay, uh, is is that, are those all of your comments, Arthur? Do you have others?
My last one for now.
Thank you. I'm Brianna or Hillary, do you have any? Anyone among your group that could respond to Mr. Doyle? And if you have a a map of the scene, we could put that back up and if you could share your screen.
Yep. Um, yes, let me look for um the best map to use.
Uh, anything further from Mast dot Howard Stein Hudson or McKay regarding the curb cut?
Ma- Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Suzu is able to enable Mr. Anudo's phone to work, but is having difficulty getting him in as a panelist. So um, Mr. Anudo, if you'd like to add commentary, you're um, you're able to speak now.
This is Sean with M A T D, uh, because, oh, actually, is he speaking right now? Okay, never mind that.
So you, I'm I'm on. Um, I was actually looking to see, I think, uh, back to the gazebo uh plans, if I if I recalled, uh, there was some uh thought from the design team and they added circuits um for electricity for the gazebo and for the uh Christmas tree. If I remember correctly, I'm actually trying to look for the the panel schedule right now as we speak. Uh, so I know there's some accommodations that will probably help um with that as well and the placement of it. And uh, the best time for that placement would be phase four, which we're still uh a little bit away from.
That is true. He's he's correct. He's correct on that. I I already know that can confirm that that did happen.
Okay, let me see if there's anyone else on the board who would like to speak. Any, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my first question, and I guess maybe to Ms. Jensen to direct it, where it will go, where it should go. It relates to parking. Um, as anyone with any history in the project knows, there was significant interest on the part of the town and the residents and the businesses to increase parking. Uh, that was thwarted based on the legal restrictions imposed by Article ninety-seven, and so our plans for more parking were thwarted. Um, and um, I I and I think a lot of residents have been come become concerned over the last few weeks, several weeks as uh certain parking spaces have disappeared, uh primarily the ones across from Bruges. So the question is, uh, what uh at this point is the net expected result of uh parking spaces? Are we on the plus side? Are we net zero or on the negative side?
I think we'll um pass it over back over to Bridget.
Yep, I um went through and did a count today. Um, right, as you said, that I always said the first half of this design did focus a lot on trying to get that the deck, you know, with the parking lot, we all went into this project thinking that we could do that. Um, you know, when that we learned we couldn't, we we, you know, we had to continue on with the design to focus on the transportation improvements. Um, so going through, and this is not for the whole of East Milton Square, it's just our limits that I have in our survey. So kind of just our project limits. Um, you know, I counted that there were existing fifty-three spaces and um throughout the whole project, um, there would be a net loss of fifteen total. Um, eight of those, as you mentioned, are by across from Bassett where the signal is going in. I think that's the biggest, there was eight spaces there because of the traffic signal that's going in and the inability to leave parking spaces where cars are going to be backing out into the middle of the intersection. Um, and just going around, there's one in front of the gas station right across from there where the new MB MBTA bus stop will be. Um, we're gaining one back on Granite Ave, on the section of Granite Ave, um, south of Bassett, so adding one there. And there were the three by the fire um station on Adam Street where we have two lanes coming around the corner there at the fire station, which need to merge down to one. So between that merge link, distance we need and also that you have a bike lane coming in there. Um, so that taper distance was needed, and that is why those three spaces there. And then there were three along Bryant when um, you know, in the final condition with what will be there'd be a bump out for the crossing near um the intersection of Bryant and Adam Street. I did notice there was one also on the other side of Adam Street, west of the project, I think. I feel like that one could go back on that one, there might be able to get that one back. Um, that was the, and once once Edge Hill is restripped, that's a um, it'll be the same number of spaces as there are out there today.
So this is a significant problem. Um, as you can imagine, as you as you know, and as you as you mentioned, the interest of the town at the start of this project were were in having more parking. And everyone knew that. And and to learn now, not to learn at the twenty-five percent or the fifty, seventy-five percent, not to have any narrative or explanation that we were going to be down fifteen spaces when the desire of the town and the residents and and the businesses was to have more parking, this is a significant problem. And I'm not sure how we deal with it at this point, but um, but you know, I I know when this project came through, uh, and when I when I uh was was first uh on the board three years ago, um, I grudgingly uh was was in approval of this project because my view was parking was key. To learn now that we're going to be down fifteen spaces and not to hear that at any point along the way is a significant problem. And I I I'm I'm not sure that, um, well, I I guess I I'll pose the question, what can we do about this?
Ms. Jensen, is there someone on your team who can respond to that question?
I just fill it out. I'll just say, as a member of the board, I I feel like we haven't, we haven't, we we weren't told. Now, maybe it was on some engineering plan, but no one came out to us and said, look, look, or put any narrative. So look, we're gonna lose fifteen spaces because the conversation would have been dramatically different. And I think Ms. Myers knows that, that that conversation three years ago would have been dramatically.
I mean, a lot of these, there weren't really ways to do the improvements that were needed in this project without removing parking spaces. I mean, Mast dot would not have allowed it, allowed a traffic signal to be put in with parking spaces backing right out into the middle of the the space.
But and and I appreciate that. But again, if 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 this board, um, or someone in the town, but this board had been presented with that at some point and said, look, you can have that light, but you have to give up eight spaces. Uh, it seems to me that would be something that we should have had the opportunity to weigh in on them behalf of the town.
Ms. Jensen.
Yep. Uh, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I was just holding my pen up. But um, no, thank you, Mike, for the for the concerns. I feel like from a communication standpoint, um, you know, we've been asked to communicate significant changes in the plan and significant um updates when it relates to phases of work. So we'll continue to do that. Um, so, but we appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, I mean, look, we're 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 gonna have, um, we we now have a board or at least one member of the board, and I imagine more members of the board who now feel like uh we have, we are ending up in the middle of a project that we didn't, we didn't uh, we we weren't aware of. And and I think we're gonna have residents and businesses who feel the same way. And so this is a significant problem, and I'm not sure in the middle of a construction problem pro- project, how to fix it. Not sure how to do that, but it it's a real communications failure. Um, and um, I, you know, I don't think, I I don't feel like the town was able to appropriately weigh in on this because we weren't made aware of that. At least I don't, I don't believe it was three years ago, but I certainly don't remember being made aware of that. Because I I think we would have, I think we would have had a lot of discussion about that, and I don't remember any.
Okay, so, oh, I see Mr. Wells's hand. Why, why don't, Mr. Zulus, could you grab?
I have two more quick points, but I'll I'll defer to Richard on this.
Uh, Mr. Doyle also, are you both looking to speak on this point?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wells and then Mr. Doyle.
I I'll let Mike go finish first. I'll come back to this. Michael, I don't want you to use your turn of thought. Go ahead and continue and then I'll comment at the end.
Um, well, yeah, I mean, um, I don't know if I think it wants to.
I could, did you have a comment on this specific issue?
Yes, but I'll wait after Mike and then Richard.
Okay, so so the two other points I had were we're really in in Ms. Jensen, you mentioned uh communications and scheduling. One on communication, uh, look, i- i- you know, as as far as I understand, the communication has been, has been good with the contractor. Um, and um, but we need better communication from DOT. Uh, my understanding is we're just not getting it, and we don't know when things are gonna happen. We don't know when they're gonna be crews in the in in the in on the deck. We don't know when they're not gonna be on the deck, and so we can't prepare our residents for when crews are gonna be there, when they're not gonna be there. This is a major construction project. It's a huge burden for the residents of this town and for the commuters going through that uh that area. And um, and to not be able to give them a heads up as to what's coming on uh is uh is something that we just can't accept. We need to know more about what's gonna happen upfront. And then finally on scheduling, I I think um, the fellow from uh McKay had mentioned, we're gonna be in phase, end of phase three by mid-September. So it's a major construction project. We've got all of this going on. It's a mess, right? Uh, we accept that in order to get an improvement. Um, but come Labor Day, traffic and businesses um are gonna be hopefully in- increasing significantly, well, not traffic, but businesses is gonna be increasing, increasing significantly. Traffic is gonna be uh increasing significantly for our residents and for everyone who uses that square. We need to be in a position where this square is passable and usable by Labor Day, which is six weeks. And I don't think that's too much to ask at this point, to have a a an area that is passable and usable. It's not now, and fine, we accept it. Construction project, but we need to have an area that's passable and usable by Labor Day. And so um, I I I don't know if that if that gets us there by the end of phase three, but I guess the question is, are we gonna have a square that is passable and usable um by Labor Day?
I'll defer the timeline question over to either Juan or Laura. Um, do you guys want to take that one?
Yeah, coming the end of the by September, I see most of the work that McKay has scheduled uh that will affect the businesses on the street, uh, which is like the the that area, the traffic signal, that should be completed by that time. Then the rest of the work should be mostly inside the park.
Okay, all right. So so the only thing I would ask respectfully is September is good, but it needs to be Labor Day. We need to, we need to have something that is usable because we're gonna have schools starting. We're gonna have businesses opening. We're gonna have more traffic. We're gonna have more pedestrians. We're gonna have school buses. So we need to have that, we need to have that by Labor Day. We need to have whatever, I don't know what date Labor Day is in September, but we need to have it by Labor Day. If you can, and I appreciate that. So thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, why don't we go to Mr. Wells and then Mr. Doyle?
I could curl with Mr. Zulus on the, he's correct on, and I get this is a difficult project. They just, but every day watching it. Um, I think that McKay, in your short time being there, I'm sure you've come to realize very quickly just the pressure that East Milton Square receives daily on the northbound commuter every morning. It's it's unique to anything. Many other communities see that are of our size, but I just want to go back historically. Michael, I think you were speaking about the negative eight spaces that we were referring to when I I got cut off and I came back in. Is that where you were?
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be net negative fifteen.
So that's what I mean. So um, I believe, Bridget, going back to my time both as Traffic Commission Chair, we first talked about this through the I believe the net loss was supposed to be three, from my notes, what I checked. How we got to fifteen is, it's bad enough that the residents hope to gain a parking lot, twenty-seven spaces that they lost to begin with before we even started, to lose another fifteen spaces in East Milton Square, particularly the number that you're gonna lose on the side of the Fruit Center and Fitness Unlimited. Two of the businesses that put the most pressure on daily parking square, that's something that we did. Mike's right, we definitely should have known that. This is, this puts us in a tough spot. I'm sure, Bridget, you know, you, but you've done enough work in East Milton to realize the priority of the commodity, that a single parking space is in that in that business.
Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my experience of this goes back to the initial Howard Stein Hudson study. I was on the committee, the advisory committee, and the number one priority was traffic control improvement in parking preservation, adequate parking space. I've already heard uh based on the spaces that have been lost of interest on the part of people now putting additional pressure on opening the old roadway Adam Street that goes through the park and having parking spaces on either of both sides of that roadway once opened. So I anticipate uh based upon what I hear, and I was in this square today, that that's gonna come to the forefront in all likelihood for more people as they hear that there's been a loss of fifteen or so spaces for parking.
Ms. Collins, did you want to weigh in on this topic?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I would like to um just um voice my support for all the comments that have been made by our colleagues. Um, and 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 encourage um Mast dot and Howard Stein Hudson to perhaps work with us. Um, you know, we we have to somehow identify more parking. I I mean, a business like Fitness Unlimited, the pandemic has hammered them. Um, I mean, lots of businesses i- in the square. But um, but we don't, we don't want to gain, safety is really important, and I appreciate all the work that everyone's done. But you know, safety at the expense of putting businesses, um, you know, o- out of business, um, doesn't I I think, you know, we need to accomplish all of these things. So I would appreciate help on on figuring out parking, and I know the board has been, um, you know, was was looking for additional parking spaces. So now it's, you know, we have to recoup and on the communications piece, um, you know, i- if uh if Mast dot can really communicate well with McKay, I I I am also hopeful that we can get something done by Labor Day because um some of these businesses are really relying on um hitting the ground running then. And um, as I said, the pandemic has really hammered everyone. So and I know Mast dot's been hammered too, but uh we really need your help.
Yeah, Mr. Zulus.
Just just one final thing. Let let me revise uh saying that this is a real problem and what can we do about it. Two, we need to do something about this. We need to do something about the fact that we're losing fifteen, we didn't know about that. So so I'm not sure what it is and how it needs to be redesigned and how it needs to be redone, but we need to do something about these fifteen spaces because you know, we weren't aware of it. Um, at least we weren't told about it. Um, and um, it's something that um that changes the calculus of this project. So we need to do something about this.
Okay, I I agree with my colleagues and I and I think we should focus on what the remedy here might be and how we how we fix the problem. So uh, to that end, I think I would ask that um Mast dot Howard Stein Hudson and McKay coordinate a meeting with Mr. Dennehy and Department of Public Works Director and possibly Representative of Board, uh, maybe me as the chair and another member of the board uh could sit down and see what what solutions we can discuss. Do we have other comments from anyone or any questions about the project, any other aspects of the project, or any further comments from from uh any of our guests this evening? Um, Mr. Dennehy.
Uh, Chair, could I just uh present a a kind of a specific question? So uh, we heard a lot of So, uh, we heard a lot of, uh, public, um, testimony about, uh, safety, right? And I think this design plan takes that into account, both at the post office and over at Bassett Street at the intersection of Granite Avenue. We heard many, many parents of, uh, of public schools, students that walk the Colley-Cotter Cunningham, that had a real tough time negotiating that. Will, will those, and, and Mike Melvin touched upon it briefly, but will those traffic signals, did, did I hear you correctly? Those new traffic signals will not be in place in time for, um, Labor, Labor Day school opening? Um, just something I want to put on my calendar and, and make sure that Milton Police and, and our crossing gods can give it the attention it needs, because, that was, this, this was one of the solutions to that problem, was, was the best way to, to cross an, an intersection is through a, a signalized, traffic signal, which, which isn't there, and anyone who tries to take a right-hand turn off of Bassett Street onto Grant Nav, Granite Ave knows how difficult it can be at any time of the day, never mind the, the, the PKM hours, but, um, confident that, that this stuff, the infrastructure work that, that is going to take place in the next couple of weeks. I just want to, would just get a little bit of clarity if, if those traffic signals, the new traffic signals will be in place. If not, I just want to make alternative methods for making sure that the first couple of weeks of school, we can, we can get, um, students and parents and, and anyone for that matter, uh, walking through, uh, East Milton Deck, uh, as safely as possible. And thank you for everyone's time this evening.
Kyle, another one, McKay. Uh, I'll talk about that. We, hey, how you doing? Uh, we will, uh, we'll circle back with our, uh, our, our signal contractor. Unfortunately, traffic signals are a tough commodity these days, um, and that is, you know, have long, very long lead times. We, we ordered them in a timely fashion, and, uh, we got the foundations in right now. Um, so it is our intent, as soon as we can get them online, uh, we will, I, I know we're coordinating with Eversource now to bring power to those areas, um, and do manhole breaks and things like that, and then maybe we can work with the, uh, Eversource Community Liaison to help us, uh, bring power to those signals faster. Um, but I will double check with them, uh, tomorrow morning, and I can report back to you on delivery dates. Um, I, I understand, I think the cabinets are in, which is actually, uh, a, a relief, because those are a long lead time with the computers and everything else, but there's a lot involved, as you all know, uh, when we get these online, they do need cycle time, they need burn time, uh, before we can take the, uh, old ones offline as well, so we know that they're up a hundred percent. Um, but I can follow up with that, uh, first thing tomorrow.
Excellent. One more, one more, um, operational question. The milling and, and overlaying of, of granite and, and these, these, this, the footprint here. But when do we anticipate that to be done, understanding that, you know, we're doing, we're doing it on Webster and, and Garden and some of those streets, uh, off Edg hill Road, and it, it is an inconvenience, I'm just wondering, um, and again, I'm not, not going to hold you to an exact date, but possibly the timing of, of that milling and overlaying, Kyle?
Yeah, uh, we're anticipating, uh, fall, uh, we're going to, you know, watch the weather here, um, and whatnot, because we don't want to open something up we can't close up. Uh, but we, uh, plan on doing something late in the fall. Milling the area, we have, uh, I think almost ninety-eight castings to, uh, to adjust and replace and, and do what we need to do. So that will take a little bit of time in between the mill and the actual final base. Um, but being the area it is, uh, it should, uh, fairly go quickly, but that would be after Labor Day for sure.
Thank you. Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, do any of my colleagues have anything else this evening on this item? Ms. Jensen, is there anything else that you wanted to add before we, before we end for this evening?
No, thank you for the discussion and the feedback.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to item six on our, uh, item five on our agenda, and I'll just, uh, ask Susie Stewart and Milton Access Television if they could help. The only members who should be panelists, the only people should be panelists at this point are members of the board, Mr. Dennehy and Mr. Dougherty and Ms. Stewart. Thank you, that, that helps us cut down significantly on the boxes that are showing up on our, on our screen. So if everyone else could be moved over, put to the attendee group, please. Okay, item five, I'm going to ask Mr. Zulus to take the lead on this discussion. It's an update on the June Massport Community Advisory Committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, this is another one to raise my blood pressure. I'm going to begin, uh, with a quote, uh, from James Madison. Uh, and in the Federalist, number ten, which were, uh, writings that were done in order to support the approval of the U.S. Constitution. Madison wrote, uh, about an issue of democracy that had to be dealt with in the Constitution, and that is, quote, "that the public good in, in democracy, if not checked, the public good is disregarded in the conflicts of rival parties, and that measures are too often decided not according to the rules of justice and the rights of the minor party, but by the superior force of an interested and overbearing majority." And as will become clear in a few minutes, with respect to the efforts of, um, the MIT Study Group and the MCAC uh, on, um, runway four R, the rules of justice have not prevailed, the rights, nor have the rights of the minor, minor party, which is the town of Milton, in the face of the superior force of an interested and overbearing majority of the other towns in the, in the, in the South Shore. So, uh, just as a, as a recap, last, late last fall, um, Professor Hansman's group at MIT, that is working, that was, was chartered to work, um, to come up with solutions to the airplane issue in various communities in eastern Massachusetts, identified three viable alternatives, uh, to the runway for our arrival. Uh, and at that time, uh, we, um, I was charged with, Mr. Dougherty, on behalf of the board, to, um, seek consensus, to try to seek consensus among South Shore communities that were also affected, including Quincy, including Braintree, including Hingham. Um, the net effect of that, and I think I reported on this before, was, uh, at the, with the, with the help of Senator Timmeltie, we did meet with Mayor Koch, and we did meet with representatives of Quincy's, um, Quincy's government on two occasions, um, but, uh, they were not very accepting to, um, any of these, any of these viable alternatives, even in rotation, even taking some of the burden, a small portion of the burden. Uh, and in terms of, uh, Braintree and Hingham, uh, Town Administrator reached out, but there was no response. Uh, we did, uh, reach out, uh, again, through the efforts of Senator Timmeltie to Congressman Lynch, and Congressman Lynch, uh, we met with Congressman Lynch last month, uh, and Congressman Lynch was, um, who's been involved in this issue, for a long time, and was one of the people behind the MI, MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding that created the MIT review. The Congressman Lynch, uh, was very supportive and very helpful, and indeed, uh, sent in a supporting letter in which he observed that it was, it should be the FAA's, I'm quoting now, FAA's goal should be to distribute both arrivals and departures at Logan Airport as widely and as safely as possible, so that no single community should be severely overburdened. Continuing the quote from, sent from Congressman Lynch, "Under the current system, there are a number of municipalities, especially the town of Milton, who are overwhelmed by overflights, while other areas remain unaffected, the situation is unhealthy and unfair." So that was, those were our efforts to seek some consensus, prior to the MIT recommendations for runway four R. But the recommendations were presented to the MCAC, two weeks ago, um, just, just, just under two weeks ago, um, at a meeting of the MCAC representatives. And the result, after five years, was that the MIT recommendations are that there be no change with respect to four R, that they have, that they have come up with no solution, um, despite the fact that they identified three viable alternatives. Their recommendations, um, now, uh, have taken these three viable alternatives and recommended, not recommended pursuing them, because of, um, their explanation, because of the explanation that there are certain unnamed quote-unquote stakeholders, including airlines, including air traffic controllers, including airport personnel, presumably, they're not identified, who raise concerns about each of these, about each of these quote-unquote viable alternatives that were identified by MIT. So the net result of the five years with respect to four R is, um, that there is no proposed solution by the, um, by the group at MIT and by the MCAC. And, uh, there were comments at the MCAC presentation, uh, just under two weeks ago, uh, from other communities, including, uh, Braintree and Quincy, uh, indicating that all the communities, the majority, if you will, all the communities surrounding the area do, would not support any kind of sharing of the burden. They would not support any kind of, um, assistance and any kind of recognition of the rights of the minority here, which is, which is Milton, the burdened minority, and the burdened minority within Milton, um, those neighborhoods that are burdened by runway four R. So, um, so it is not, um, a good result, um, with respect to the MIT, uh, report on runway, uh, four R. Um, the result on, uh, from that report on runway, um, twenty-seven, uh, is better. There was, um, a recommendation early on for an early turn, earlier turn over Mattapan and Milton, uh, that would have, uh, increased the burden for Milton, uh, because of our involvement, because of our MCAC, uh, representatives' involvement. Um, that recommendation is not happening, uh, and that did not find its way into the recommendations in, in, um, the Hansman Report. So, uh, that's where we are. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll hand it over to Tom. Tom responded, uh, both, um, both at the meeting, at the MCAC meeting, and then subsequently in writing, uh, to the, um, to the Block Two recommendations, the MIT recommendations. And so I'll turn it over to Tom, just to kind of go through what his response was. Um, and I will just say, the report itself is, uh, internally inconsistent, uh, just as a final note. Uh, the report states, um, with respect to four R and the summary of the recommendations, uh, the primary benefits, quote, "The current straight-in approach was found to have the lowest net population exposure among all RNAV approach candidates evaluated." Well, that's simply not true when you go to the RNAV approach candidates under four R in the report, where they're, you know, for example, one of the, one of the flight paths, um, uh, would have benefited, uh, twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty people. One of the, one of the, um, one of the flight paths would have benefited, um, uh, seven thousand, uh, just over seven thousand people. And so, and so it's, it's, um, it's difficult to accept after five years that there is no, uh, no solution offered uh, from, uh, MIT or from the MCAC. But anyway, Tom, I'll, I'll turn over you just to talk about the response that you gave.
Uh, thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so, picking up from what, uh, Mr. Zulus said, uh, and let's go back just to April. In April, there was a presentation by MIT that said that they were at a stage for us that was equivalent to the stage they had been, uh, at with regard to thirty-three L, uh, in many ways, uh, s- some months earlier, which is to say they had identified, uh, actually, there were, Mr. Zulus is right, there were three key viable paths, they'd identified five, but, uh, from the very beginning, we had already said that the one that goes over the expressway is not one that we would be pursuing, and there was another, uh, path, that, that was a, that was a, another path that, uh, they identified, that, and that expressway one is an RNAV, uh, 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 RNP, a curving path. The other was a slight modification to the RNAV, uh, path that we have, uh, in our subject two, that was, again, not something worth paying attention to. So there were three that mattered, and they presented in April that, hey, we, there are issues with the, there are some technical issues with regard to of the, the, um, RNAV path, uh, and I'll come to those. And there's some different technical issues with regard to the RNP path, keeping in mind those RNP paths over Hingham or over uh, Howe's Neck, and then over the water, would affect many fewer people, twenty thousand fewer people, uh, i- if, if that over Hingham and water path were used, seven thousand fewer people, uh, over the Howe's Neck and water. And, uh, we never thought and never, I, I advocated that those would be used to substitute. It's all about rotation, dispersion, and trying to restore in the manner of use of RNAV paths, which is the modern modality, a family of them, as was said by Tom Reynolds five years ago, who works at Lincoln Labs, he's the defense equivalent of, uh, the MIT crew on this one, which is civil. And, uh, for example, his idea is that you're not going to be putting a string of planes onto an aircraft carrier on an RNAV, they're too easy to pick off. You'll have a family, and that would be better, and that's been out there forever. So there are RNAV paths, and there's an RNP curved path, and I'll come to that in one second. So, uh, what happened was nicely, uh, at our request, uh, after the meeting with Doc, with Congressman Lynch, uh, he submitted a letter right at the point that the meeting on June twenty-fourth was occurring, the general meeting. And, um, Mike, Mike read from it, I read from it at the, at the meeting itself. And let's keep in mind, he, he is a federal congressional representative who, whose responsibilities and purview spreads across Hingham and Quincy and Milton. So he's, he's one who has a, a dispersed, uh, you know, accountability, and a dispersed responsibility, and, and a dispersed sensibility. Uh, so it was very nice that he said that the concentration over Milton is unhealthy and unfair. And, uh, FAA was on the call, uh, FAA has served for me before, and we'll hear from him again, yes. So, uh, yes, MIT then said that based essentially on feedback slash pushback, is in my words, uh, but not particularly identified, uh, in any detail at all as to who and what, from the air traffic controllers, the FAA, and, uh, airlines, uh, for two different kinds of reasons, they, uh, th- they are not going to recommend going forward, the MIT are not at the moment going to recommend going forward with any of those. And, uh, we'll come to the technical issues in a moment, and I said that, and I, and I, and I said in a supplement that we, we were asked to submit. In fact, I requested that, that there be, as did, as did others, uh, the opportunity to submit a, a supplement. Uh, I, I pointed out three things. One is the equity issue, uh, Mr. Zulus reiterated it. Essentially, uh, when you have a, a, a condition that's imposed by a central government, the whole notion of, uh, trying to have a majority rule, uh, once that has been already imposed, is inequitable. People have won, Kenneth Arrow won a Nobel Prize for putting that out many years ago. And so at the meeting, and, uh, and, and after that, I pointed that out again, reiterated that, to which MIT, uh, and I appreciate this, said, "Look, that's not for us. We, we've presented, uh, these matters with regard to these, I'll call it shifting of the paths," to which our response is, "Yes, but what you didn't do, and we've asked you to do, is to look at modalities of rotation. You didn't do it for us, and you didn't do it for thirty-three L." That's, uh, the, in America, for the departures that go to the west and northwest. They go over Arlington, Cambridge, Medford, uh, Belmont, uh, they're, they have a number, a, a number of, uh, constituencies who were themselves, eight months ago or so, uh, very disappointed on the FAA pushback that, that is the equivalent of which happened here on the pushback to MIT this time. And just on the thirty-three L at that meeting again. So when they pushed back and Congresswoman, uh, Clark and Congressman Lynch then said, "No, that's not acceptable, you have to come up with something." At this meeting, MIT's further, uh, uh, presentation on that was not rotation, was not dispersion, it was essentially a slight, I wouldn't say slight, it's, and some people who are affected by it was, by it would say, "No, it's not slight." It was simply a substituted fairly similar, uh, thirty-three L departure path. And each of those representatives from those communities, uh, Cambridge, Arlington, Belmont, Medford, Somerville, spoke at that meeting and said, "This is frustrating, five years, and we have this." Now, with regard to, um, the particulars, just with regard to the technical issues, in April, after that April meeting, I I wrote, but you have to submit it first to Massport and they convey it to MIT and the FAA, that we need information on several things. One is the baseline, that is to say, what's the pre RNAV departure spread? What were the paths? The one that the MIT used then and used on June 24th is so abstracted. It's such a high level of abstraction that it doesn't show you the before, so that they pass through it and they, they have for other reasons. They talk about, well, this would, this would shift and there are more people affected by the shift and I'll come to that. But they don't even have the baseline correct. In April, I reminded them that we had asked Massport, and God bless them, to take the time, and it took months, to develop a, a, a presentation, a slide of the October 2009 dispersed paths, that path, it's that slide with the many, many white strings across the blue background that shows the dispersion. One picture worth 1,000 words. We presented it, presented it to the select board in the Milton residence previously. And to put, and I asked them in April to put that forward. They did not. I also asked them to take the other slide I wanted to have prepared. So, and that is the slide that we had, we asked FAA itself to prepare on the four L environmental assessment. You remember the first slide that they prepared showed their proposed, you know, sky rail that would become the four L RNAV path? Well, that they didn't have the four R path. So we said, okay, let's leave all controversy aside about where the four R path may or may not be. At least let's look and see what four, what FAA says as to what that path is. And again, I wanted MIT to put that forward because when you contrast the Massport slide, not MIT's, with the FAA slide, you'll see that before and after baseline of 2009 and now. So following up then, I've asked them, look, put, put the equity issue aside, put forward the baseline. And secondly, on the technical issues, in April, I had asked them, you say that if the, if, if there are alternative paths, how do these alternative paths merge in with the existing path? Let's stop there. They don't. We said there would be rotation. So like only, only take 30 seconds here because we could follow this up at any other time, but you've, you've heard much of it. The first alternative path we asked them to prepare is an RNAV path. It's a straight-in path. It's another string in the heart, but it's to the east of the existing path at 15 degrees, you know, 15 degrees coming in at the point that it arrives, a 15 degree angle. It's the mirror image of the JetBlue path that existed for years. So there's a 15 degree JetBlue path that FAA was perfectly happy, willing and able on behalf of JetBlue to fly, an RNAV path. We said, put it, put it over there. So on that one, their particular response is not that there's any issue of rotation because it would be of dispersion because you could rotate those. You could say one day it is the existing RNAV path, the other day it is that JetBlue mirror image. They said, well, that would, that could affect about 8,000 more people. Yes. But if you rotated it and you could balance out the rotation, you could, you could actually adjust the rotation so that the fact that Quincy has more people in that particular area than, area than, than Milton has, because Milton is affected, I think you have the numbers, Milton's affected by 40,000, present path, 40,549 under the people, under their measurement. I'm sorry, Milton, 34,567 and Quincy, 40,529. Yes, but you could rotate and adjust the amount of the duration of the number of days in a month to deal with that. And they don't, MIT question that. It's the pushback from the communities, although we have Congressman Lynch's statement that dispersion is, is needed. And I'll leave that, I'll leave that there for now. The others, over Hingham, over, over, over House Neck, as I mentioned, many fewer people. And they say, yes, you could, you could possibly use those, but how do they merge in with the existing path? Because only 60% of the planes or so can use that at the moment. So you're going to have another 40% of the capacity that's going to have to be using the straight-in RNAV path. You can't get enough, you know, touchdown, touching down at the airport with that throughput. To which we say, look, there are, there are a number of, and they said that's called a merging and sequencing issue. So in April, I said, wait a minute, we, we are not aeronautics experts, but we know that Atlanta, O'Hare, Reagan National, and another that I'm not remembering, all, all have had that modality for years. We'd like that, those examples proffered and analyzed. They didn't do that. So I reiterated to them that we insist that they do do that, please. And then as to the, you know, the related issue of sequencing in, and I know this sounds again, technical, but in, in 2017, when they were, when the FAA and Massport were repairing the four R runway, they provided for a so-called sidestep, the planes going straight in on the RNAV could sidestep over to four L after the final fix, after M I L T T, and land on four L. So one of the, so we had asked them in April and earlier, please look at the possibility of a sidestep modality for that. And they did not do that. So I reiterated that. And, and they need to please look at the technical aspects of that. Why do I say they need to do that? Because one of the things I asked before the meeting and then during the meeting and Massport's official was the one who picked up on it. He said, okay, based on the inputs that we're getting today, in the next couple of weeks, we would like any follow-up requests submitted to address those questions, some of which came from 33L, et cetera. Now I'll, I'll, I'll stop there with the guy to 27. Yes, Mr. Zulus pointed it out. Shortly after I came on as MCAC rep, I met with Alan Wright. There was a request by him on behalf of Roselandale to modify and test a modification of the departure path 27, as it's called. And I, I said to him, look, we, we can support this, but you have to modify your own modification because we're not going to support. And indeed, we would oppose any planes over Matapan turning earlier over Matapan and then onto Milton. And, but we can work with you to support and recommend with you a modification. And I presented that, you know, a couple of years ago. And that's, that's what happened. And the MIT then in its presentation is, is, is going forward with the, with the recommendation on that modification that came about for that reason. Where are we? I, I think that, you know, yes, it's disappointing. I don't accept that it's quote a result yet. Because there was the statement that, okay, there's now going to be the time this summer for further input. But what I want is engagement with the airlines, with the air traffic controllers and a change in the modality here. It's been five years and MIT's done, you know, a lot of work. We've done a lot of work, others have, but there hasn't been that engagement. So I'm hoping that we can affect that sometime this, you know, late summer into the, into the fall. It's already scheduled that there'd be some further assessment of this and resolution perhaps in the fall. So that's, that's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dougherty and Mr. Zulus. Does anyone have anything further or any questions? Mr. Zulus, did you have anything further?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Well, if not, I'll, Tom, I thought your follow-up memo to, or letter to Professor Hansman in the MIT group was, was very good and made the case for the points that you raised and went over this evening. And as you said, I think there's, there's further steps involved here that we'll need to see where we're at at the, at the fall meeting.
And, and one, one, Madam Chair, one step there is that I asked just this afternoon, the Chair of the MCAC said, okay, yes, I've received, that was last, last weekend, I've received your, your follow-up, which essentially reiterates and particularizes what I had said at the meeting. And I'll be receiving others from other communities. And I am sure that's going to include 33L. And so I asked him by email in response, please provide any of those other requests from the other communities such as 33L, so that we can take those into account and, and, you know, I can inform you of those. Because I think those add to the picture that the objective of dispersion has not been achieved by this study and that there needs to be engagement with those others, they call it stakeholders, that have pushed back without coming to the table with us.
Ms. Collins and Mr. Doyle have their hands up. I think Ms. Collins was first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Dougherty, for, for your letters clear. And, and I, my question is, is there anything at this point that the board can do to, to help, you know, with another letter of support or, or something along those lines?
Well, thanks. And I think that, you know, the, the board's support is, was very helpful in the meeting with Congressman Lynch that was, you know, arranged and, you know, Mrs. Zulus and Ms. Conlon attended that. I, I think that what we'll probably end up wanting to do is to take and gather whatever we learned from the other communities and whatever we learned from MIT's response to this reiterated and supplemented press, you know, statement, supplement that I provided, take that and then work with that toward some next step in, in the early fall. As I say that, I'm reminded in, in my own mind that we, I, we spent a lot of time in 2020 on the four L environmental assessment, 62 page with attachments, set of comments that I believe the FAA is, is, you know, in the process of responding to. And it's interesting that it's, you know, July, not January or February or March. It's taken some time. They have other things on their mind. But at some point, we're going to get their response to that. And we're going to need to also, you know, address that.
Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, thank you, Mr. Dougherty. I echo what Ms. Collins said. She asked the question that I was going to ask first. And you gave a straightforward answer on that. I had been wondering as I listened whether or not we should be asking ourselves, is there anything we have overlooked? It's always easier to look at all the things that we've done. And one of the positions is to take a look at 360 and say, hey, we, we missed something somewhere. It's a, it's a rhetorical question at this point, but I wanted to put it out on the table. And then to ask if, if there are any other affiliations that we should explore, are there business and industry relationships? We've been moving down the government path between the select board, state senator, state representative, congressman, other, other parties out there that may have a vested interest, a collateral interest in this. I don't know the answer to that, but I wanted to put that forward for us to think about and possibly explore.
Yes, yeah, for my part, on the 360, I mean, I think it's something that we should, we should look at. And we are aware that there are, there are only, there are not only, but there are two paths here and we have pursued. And if there are others, that's good too. But we have pursued both the direct federal legislative amendment path and this MIT, I'll call it a discretionary path because under the FAA mandate, their mandate is safety and efficiency. And as a discretionary matter, they can, they can address overflight noise, but they're not mandated to do so in any way that, that would affect safety and efficiency. But we should look at that. And then as to the other, other entities out there, you know, JetBlue, for example, has commented on the, the four L EA saying, we do want the four L to become an RNAV. So there's an industry source that is actually adverse to our view on it. So again, I think it's a, it's a very good question. I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, it's something to think about. I'm not sure what, there are certainly other kinds of groups, right? Religious, educational, all of the, all of the groups that are affected by the noise beyond mirror, you know, beyond just the significant effects on residents, on residents. It's the other capacity of those same residents and other residents that are affected as well. So that's a set of constituencies that could be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we also want to keep Congressman Lynch's staff informed of the progress here since he was involved with the MOU five years ago.
Yep. And his staff member was at the June 24th meeting. Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Dougherty. Did anyone have anything else before we go on to our next agenda item? Thank you very much. We appreciate you joining us, Mr. Dougherty.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Zulus. All right. We are now on to item six, which is a discussion of Community Preservation Act next steps. And we have our Assistant Town Planner, Allison Quinn, is going to join us.
Hi, how is everyone?
We still seem to be having an issue with participants and attendees. So if there's a way we can get that addressed, I would appreciate it. Okay, Ms. Quinn, thank you for coming in tonight and for waiting.
Oh, of course. Good evening, Chair Conlon and members of the select board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight on the next steps for community preservation funds and the community preservation committee. Now that we've received approval from the Attorney General's Office, the Community Preservation Committee, or CPC, should be appointed to maximize the town's opportunity to put CPA funds into projects that will benefit the town. This will be the, the first round. So I think that something that Tim and I were thinking about potentially suggesting was, was a pilot round because it'll be a split year. We have gotten feedback from the Community Preservation Coalition that the expected return on the investment by the town of Milton will be 32.2%. So if you took what, what revenue was put before the warrant, which was $386,400, that would give us a total of roughly $511,000 that would be put towards community preservation projects.
Allison, if I may, that's for FY '22. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, that's FY '22. We have put together a draft eligibility form that will be ready for distribution once the CPC is, is, you know, appointed and put together. Our goal is to utilize the eligibility form, not only to ready the applicants for the full application, but to also collaborate with the committee and town staff on how to support and prioritize potential projects. You know, it was my experience with, with some of the applicants that we saw come forward in Boston is that there is a myriad of skill sets putting these applications together. So we kind of see ourselves as that point of contact so that we can help that, that these applications and get these applications to a place where they have, you know, they're, they're fully able to move forward with a full application and that the committee and the town will, will feel that the projects are viable when they go before them, honestly. I did, I do have a PowerPoint. I didn't pull it up on the screen. It was already distributed to everybody. It's very concise. I don't, I didn't want to put too many bells and whistles and confuse everyone because this is all very new still. One of the things that I did want to call out as just a little bit of a change is is that we actually voted to let, allow for the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust to have an appoint, an appointed member on the Community Preservation Committee. And that is in addition to someone from the Milton Housing Authority. So that would leave the Select Board three at-large appointees to the committee. So that, that's really where we're at. We're really, really excited. We're glad the Attorney General finally came back and said, said move forward. And there'll be lots of good stuff coming up, we hope. Does anyone, and, and thanks again for letting me come. Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Allison? Mr. Dennehy? Do you want to mute Mr. Dennehy?
Not, not a question, not a question per se, Madam Chair, just, just, just for the viewing public. So the treasurer sent out preliminary tax for first and second quarter. And on that is the CPA charge. So Town Hall received a multitude of calls from people wondering what that was. That was, you know, a part of, part of annual town meeting, or I'm sorry, last July special town meeting, where the town approved the Community Preservation Act. This, this is that charge that comes with that. This is the dollar amount that, that Ms. Quinn had referenced. So those in the viewing audience, what we're talking about is literally itemized on your preliminary tax bill from the treasurer, which you should have received last week. It's itemized as CPA charge. And that's what we're referring to. Allison, just, just for a point of edification, that roughly half a million dollars, is that, is that full fiscal year?
No, that is for the, the first and second quarter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's, that's better news. Excellent. But thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Allison.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Quinn for, for the presentation. And I think it, it'll be a great thing to get up on the Community Preservation Committee page or, or maybe the front page of our, our website for a while. I guess I was just wondering, it may be too early to, to think about this, but about, you know, timing for the committee to, to start its work. And I, I know I spoke with Karen Preval, our Finance Director, Town Accountant. And, and she mentioned that the Coalition has people who can come in and, and, you know, help get everybody jump started. But I didn't know if you sort of had a timeline about, you know, when they should begin. Thank you.
It, it would be great, you know, if, if people wanted to move forward and do a pilot for the, you know, the first half of the fiscal year to get a CPC formed and kind of ready for action by, you know, late summer. I think the, the benefit of doing like a smaller pilot round with the, with the five hundred thousand, it allows the Community Preservation Committee to kind of get a feel of how this is supposed to flow. And also an opportunity to familiarize ourselves with the Community Preservation Coalition. They do offer training. One thing that's really beneficial to, to, you know, subscribing to the Coalition is that there's a reporting mechanism that will be required to do annually, and they help support us in, in those efforts. You know, we're, we're not talking about millions and millions of dollars, but at the same time, you know, it's a little time consuming. And we need to make sure that we're meeting that ten percent in each of the categories. And that's what the state's really concerned about. So I think the sooner the better. You know, I, I think there's several of us on staff that have some familiarity with how this is going to work and, you know, very, very eager and willing to be helpful to the CPC and the Select Board in any way.
So to that, I'm sorry, Ms. Collins, will you finish with your questions? Okay, to that end, I, I think it's important that we get the committee appointed quickly. We have had designees nominated by the various other boards, the Affordable Housing Trust, Park Commissioners, Historical Commission, the CONCOM, and Housing Authority, who, well, the Housing Authority may not have designated anyone yet, but the others have. And since we have them already designated, I think it would be a good idea for us to make our three selections. We have received a number of applications. It was advertised in the Milton Times. We have some good candidates with good qualifications who have applied. My suggestion would be that we designate them or delegate a member of the board to review the applications, perhaps work with Ms. Quinn with two of their qualifications and to come back to our board with a slate of candidates, similar to what we did with the local historic district committee, where Ms. Collins is reviewing those applications with the help of the Historical Commission. And I was going to suggest that Mr. Doyle may be interested and willing to be our point person to review the applications and propose a slate to the board.
Just like, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Doyle.
I'd be happy to work with Allison on that. And I was just looking at calendars, because I could sense in the conversation the need to be expedient here so that people can be notified of the service on the committee, and the committee can be oriented, given the professional background that they need and so on down the line. So would you think that we might have recommendations for the next meeting of the Select Board, the twenty-eighth of July? Would that be with your timetable and thinking?
Yeah, are you asking that of me, Mr. Doyle, or? Okay, yeah, the board is meet, I think so. The board is meeting next on July twentieth, which is Tuesday evening, and then on the twenty-eighth. So I think the twentieth, we already have a number of items for. The twenty-eighth is our regularly scheduled meeting. We just added the twentieth on Friday when we met with the, on the finance projects. So, yes, I think if we could have recommendations by the twenty-eighth of July, that would help us to get the committee in place, warn them, everybody get the open meeting hour and all the background information that they need, and hopefully meet in August.
It would, that work for you, Allison?
Yes, it would.
Great. So I'll follow up and we can put our heads together.
Delegating this to Mr. Doyle and coming back on the twenty-eighth of the slate of candidates. I see Ms. Collins nodding, Mr. Wells or Mr. Zulus. Are you in agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm fine with that.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Doyle. Appreciate your taking that on.
Thank you all, I think.
All right, it's now eight thirty-five. We, we had, we've had two important but busy items on our, on our agenda earlier. So we now have item seven, which is a report of the Finance Committee. And for that, I will go to the members of the Finance Committee, who are Mr. Zulus and Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just getting a little caffeine to keep them going. So we have on the agenda Finance Committee met, I believe it was last Friday, Thursday, Friday, I can't remember exactly now. And the primary discussion involved the.
Just one question, Madam Chair, for Michael. Is this our Finance Committee or you had the whole, like, schools, everybody, just, just doing our?
Just, just.
Okay, good. All right, go ahead. Continue. I apologize.
No, no, not at all. Not at all.
Although it was a full meeting of the board as well, so Ms. Collins and I were also in attendance.
Oh, that's, no, that's fine. I, I just wanted, because you, when you talk about Finance Committee, it's usually the joint. And so I just, as you know, I've been away. Okay, thank you.
And, and, you know, to that end, Richard, you know, we, we do want to meet with the schools as soon as possible. So hopefully that'll happen in the next few weeks. So we get going. So the primary discussion that we had was about the American Rescue Plan and the CARES Act funding. And, and I, I, I'm not sure if Mr. Dennehy or Ms. Preval, who's here, wants to give an update just very high level. Under the American Rescue Plan, there is two point eight, eight million dollars that is coming directly to Milton for infrastructure projects, including sewer water, municipal broadband, and other pandemic-related needs. So that's coming directly to Milton, and then we have another five point three million dollars that's coming to Milton from the Norfolk County Commissioners. Some of the funding from the American Rescue Plan went to Norfolk County Commissioners. And according to the, the requirements of the legislation, it is the executive authority of the town which determines the allocation of that funding and how the, how the funding is going to be used by the town. This is a departure for Milton. Typically, the, the authority for appropriating funds is at the town meeting. And so under this legislation, it's a little bit different. And so one of the discussions, part of the discussion that we had in finance was coming up with a procedure that includes the kind of public input that we would get from a, from a town meeting. We need to make these decisions, but, but we do need, obviously, to get public input. Perhaps public hearings, perhaps presentations to the Warren Committee, perhaps presentation to the town meeting. If we haven't had to act prior to town meeting. But it seems to me, and I think Arthur, I think we're in agreement, that it behooves us to come up with a procedure for getting input, given that this is an atypical procedure for the, for the, for the Select Board. And then there's also, Ms. Preval, I think, has provided us with a recap of the CARES Act funding. So, so, so Mike, Mr. Dennehy, maybe either you or Ms. Preval can kind of give us kind of a lay of the land in terms of where we are in those, those funding sources.
Sure. Thank you, Members Zulus, Members of the Board. Yeah. Very thorough, two meetings, talking about ARPA. Again, it is, it is a, it is meant to be a much more transparent process. The town will have to present a dashboard. This board, the Select Board, will have to authorize all of the spending. The town has, the treasurer has received and secured in, in, in a bank half of the two point eight, eight, eight million that will receive directly from the federal government. At last week's Norfolk County Commissioners' meeting, they unanimously approved the, that they will accept the hundred and thirty-seven million dollars on behalf of the twenty-seven communities in Norfolk County. Further guidance is coming from them. They will also have to follow a similar process. I'm not sure if, if they will be the executive. There was a letter that was sent out from the Commissioners to us where they're, they're asking us to submit grant applications to them. It was my understanding that the five point four million dollars for the town of Milton would be sent over in a similar fashion. But more guidance will be coming from the Norfolk County Commissioners. But in, in their preliminary letter, it sounds like the town will have to present projects to them the same way department heads in Milton will have to present projects to the Select Board. So again, we're going to, we're going to work through that. I'm meeting with an executive at the Norfolk County tomorrow, just to kind of get up to speed on that. But again, all, all good stories. The, the funding sources are here. And, and they do have some restrictions, as, as you mentioned. But I, I think this is a very good thing for the town. There's obviously a lot of infrastructure work that needs to be done. Marina Fernandez, our town engineer, submitted a pretty lengthy list of, of work and project types of water main improvement projects and sewer and drain rehabilitation, sewer rehabilitation, all, all sorts of stuff, that pump station rehabilitation, sewer hydraulic models, things like that, that, that fall into this, this bucket list. But the public should know that, that this will be a much more transparent process with, with this executive board that I report to will, will authorize each and every funding, which is not necessarily how, how the CARES, the CARES package works. But I think the federal government really wants to show where this money is going and what it's being used for. Karen, any, anything in there I, I missed that I'd like to add on to?
You didn't miss anything for you, Madam Chair? In terms of the CARES Act, just a refresher, the, the town received was eligible for two million, four, thirty-four, eight hundred and four, forty dollars. So far, we've expensed one million, nine, twenty-eight, oh, ninety-two. We have a hundred and thirty-six thousand that is in committed product, committed encumbrances for projects. So the balance of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand remaining in the CARES Act for expenses that we can use through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. In regards to FEMA, we've expended a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars and we've received seventy-eight thousand in terms of reimbursements. We'll, I'll be submitting a few more reimbursements in July for both FEMA and for CARES Act. Currently, we're receiving one point one out of the two point four that was eligible for CARES.
Thank you, Ms. Preval. And, and obviously for the CARES Act, our priority is trying to make sure we make use of that before the end of December. And I know that Ms. Preval and Ms. Dexter on the school side are meeting frequently during the early part of the summer. Hopefully that will continue to identify as many needs as possible and to assist the school department as much as we possibly can. Mr. Zulus, is there more from the Finance Committee?
No, just, just one question, and I, I don't mean to, I don't mean to, and Arthur's going to jump in. But, and I, I don't mean to hit you cold with something, Karen. Do you have the number with you on the amount of the CARES Act money that we've been able to use to assist the schools of the, of the amounts that we've expensed? We can get that for the next. I, I just think it's, you know, it's important to, to, to show where that money has gone. And, and I know a significant, fairly good amount of it has gone over to schools.
I don't have the list right now, but that's something that I can get to you. We have, over the last two to three weeks, I've been working with Amy Dexter. So there were a lot of transportation costs that we were able to expense out of the CARES Act, along with buying some different Chromebooks that we discussed earlier. But I can get you that breakdown later this week.
Thanks. Thanks, Karen.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to be back a little bit on both Mike and Mike Zulus, both Mikes, Mike Zulus and Mike Dennehy said, by reinforcing the notion of transparency and that we want to get this on tonight's agenda, to get an early start. You have to come out of the gate very, very quickly, because there will be competition for resources as projects are identified. And we don't want to be caught in a position whereby we're paying a premium at a later point in time down the road. Just one level of thinking on this. And I was wondering if Karen could also talk a little bit about the timeframe within which the costs must be incurred and then the ultimate reporting out on those costs so that people have timetables in mind. And although these timetables may seem a little bit down the road, they're not. They're right around the corner.
Ms. Preval?
Thank you. So there are a variety of requirements in terms of the American Rescue Plan Act for funding. In regard to the Treasury, they're interpreting the requirements that cost be incurred by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four to only require that recipients have obligated the funds by such date. The period of, of the performance will run until December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six, which will provide the recipients a reasonable amount of time to complete projects funded through the fiscal recovery funds. So we have, you know, a couple of years in terms of looking at planning projects and looking at how we can, you know, minimize different debt services that we have over the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Ms. Collins, did you have your hand up?
Yes, Madam Chair. I was just wondering, at the same time that other departments are putting forward possible projects, have we looked at what kind of lost revenue we may have had? I realize because of the makeup of our tax base, we were, we're in actually a better condition than, you know, percentage-wise of, of lost revenue than some of our, our neighbor communities. But I, I was just wondering if, if we have looked at that at all.
Mr. Dennehy, would you know the answer to that? Or Ms. Preval?
Yes, so we're in the process.
No, go ahead, Karen. Sorry. I know you've been working with the treasurer on this. Thank you.
So we're in the, we're in the process of looking at all, all of our revenue. We can go back to two thousand and eighteen. There's a formula that the state has that determines revenue loss and where we should be. So we'll be looking at all of the revenue through, that we receive through the state and through our local receipts. So we should, we'll be looking at that over the next few weeks. But there's a form- But there's a formula that the state has that we have to use to determine that.
Thank you.
Anyone, any other comments or questions? Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, I was just thinking along the lines of the transparency and the fact that there will be a dashboard. And Mr. Dennehy is at our request exploring the possibility of collaborative dashboard development with other communities in Norfolk County. If we were to regularly schedule updates for select board meetings, reporting out on ARPA progress, I think that might be in the interest of the community. Would you agree with that, Mr. Zulus?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Dennehy and Ms. Collins?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and to that point, we did talk during both the Finance Committee. There will be an administrative burden placed on the accounting department to maintain that. And there will likely be the need for a part-time employee to come in and supplement Ms. Prival's department and make sure that that dashboard is current in real time and that we're following through on this. The CARES package with the FEMA, both Ms. Dexter and Ms. Prival, it can attest that it's quite administratively heavy. Adding this transparency, you know, real-time transparency dashboard piece to be succinct is going to need some administrative help. So that's something that is allowable in the funding source, but something that we'll need to put together relatively quickly.
Ms. Collins, and then Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, a couple of things. I guess maybe we would share that person with schools because the dashboard would be one. But I wanted to circle back to Mr. Zulus as the Chair of the Finance Committee and just say that I realize that you're looking for some input around process. And I want to make sure we don't lose sight of that and to see if we can, you know, make sure that we get you some input on that.
There were two things I wanted to come out of the meeting with, and I appreciate both you and Mike picked up on them. One was to put on the radar screen of this board that one of the first things we may want to allocate is funding for the accounting department from ARPA in order to pay for a resource to help us and to help Karen. And then, two, you know, the extent to which members of the board want to give feedback tonight or, you know, subsequently about what we should do on the process. And maybe the instruction will be, we want, you want the Finance Committee to make a proposal, and that's fine. But if we can get some thoughts from the board about whether public hearings make sense, whether a presentation in the Warrant Committee makes sense, just what you're thinking. Those are some of the things that we discussed in Finance, but it's this board that will be deciding what that process is.
Is that all, Ms. Collins?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this disbursement is very similar to how Homeland Security money was dispersed. There were multi-millions of dollars dispersed after 9/11 to communities across this country. So, to Karen's point, this should have A&amp;M Administrative Management built into it, both for us, for the funds that we disperse, which should help you out. And number two, to Mr. Dennehy, I would expect that Norfolk County, if they're taking this on the same thing, they're going to be looking for administrative management for dispersing these funds. Have you heard any discussion about that, both for us on the local level or for them on the regional level?
Mr. Dennehy, can you speak to that latter question?
That's one of my questions tomorrow when I sit and talk to that person. I can't imagine, and again, the administrative process of multiple communities sending in applications and then qualifying one project or another. So, again, I'll expect more guidance in the 30-day announcement that they made. But, very good point. You can understand the magnitude of 27 communities sending in multiple applications for projects. So, something to be discussed.
And then, just, Madam Chair, can I have one follow-up to Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
So just in your thought of, even though, so the total responsibility, ultimate responsibility for dispersing of these grant funds lies with this board. So you'd want to go to the Warrant Committee just to kind of brief them on how we make our decisions? Go ahead.
It's one thought, just in terms of, and, you know, we have discussed, I think Arthur and I discussed it as more of a presentation, just so, and maybe get feedback, because they deal with the budget, right? And so, to the extent that they look at the budget, they might have feedback. They might have some kind of overarching view, and they might have some feedback. So it was more to get, it was the thought was, we might want to go to the Warrant Committee for feedback.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wells. My thought for the Finance Committee would be that the nature of the Warrant Committee meetings probably should be presentation and into solicit input, but ultimately, the expenditure authority is going to be with us under the federal act. But I think it's a good idea to keep them informed and to periodically update them. Maybe it's quarterly, we could talk to them about what we think the schedule should be. My sense of determining priorities would be that Mr. Dennehy, as the town administrator, probably would be gathering different priorities from various departments, various independent boards, and bringing them to the Finance Committee. And that that's probably the initial vetting stage between Mr. Dennehy and the Finance Committee, and then they could be brought to our meetings. That would be one way of approaching it that I would suggest. What do others think? Any other approaches, Mrs. Collins?
Well, I think that's absolutely necessary, what you were talking about. But in reading the guidance, there's also, there are other opportunities and to help the community. And I think it is important to hear from residents in some way or in business people, you know. So I would advocate for some kind of component to invite feedback from people, just so we sort of have a full array of things to look at. Because there may be things that are really necessary that we're not aware of, just through departments. And they may all come up, but I just don't know.
Would that be, Ms. Collins, at a meeting of our board or a Finance meeting or some kind of a special meeting that's only relating to ARPA? That might be attended by a variety of people, different town representatives?
That's a great question. I kind of think something standalone might be the most efficient way of doing this. And I don't know whether it's also something the board would entertain as far as like a survey or... But I think some kind of remote, separate sort of forum or something like that, just so more people can participate, perhaps. I think there are a lot of different ways that we could do that. You know, we might go to the chamber. You know, we might go to civic groups. I think that there are a number of different ways we could do that.
Mr. Wells? You're on mute, Mr. Wells.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I applaud. So, to Ms. Collins' comments, I just, I think we need to be very clear in what this can be used for. But I want to go back to your comments first. I really think the first place we should look, Mr. Dennehy should be looking through all of our departments. He and Karen could be discussing things with the schools as well. I think we need to look at any of the losses that we've incurred, the voids that currently exist that have happened since we've gone into this pandemic. And any of the, like as Karen knows, some of them pressing capital things, things like that that would fall under this that we can address with this that might have been, you know, sitting left unfunded for, you know, a year or two years or even longer. So that's, as you know, sitting on financials, there are a lot of needs that before us already.
Right. Any other comments? It's almost nine o'clock. So, any other discussion on this topic? Anything further from the Finance Committee? Has the board provided some input or some thoughts on process and priorities?
I think we have some direction.
We can always have a follow-up discussion on this as well, if the Finance Committee wants to give it some further thought at a meeting and then bring it back to an agenda.
I think we'll probably, I hope we're in a position by the 28th to be able to make perhaps some initial recommendations.
That'd be great. Okay. All right, well, thank you.
I hope that's okay, Arthur.
28 seems to be a magic date. Oh, by the way, Madam Chair, could you indulge me for just a moment on the 28th with respect to the Community Preservation Committee that we talked about a moment ago?
Yes.
Now that we have that in place, it strikes me that if there is anyone out there listening who is interested, please, this next week, be sure to go to the town website and complete the interest form and submit it. If you want to nominate somebody, talk to them and have them do it. The window is going to close on this very, very fast.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Okay, so thank you to the Finance Committee. And now, we're on to the Policy Committee. And I'm going to go to Mr. Zulus on that one as well, and Ms. Collins. I think Mr. Zulus is the Chair of the Policy Committee, but I'm not positive with that. That may have changed.
We actually didn't, we didn't take the time to elect a chair, so we'll figure that out.
Okay, we'll go to you both.
We'll figure that out. We met today in the first meeting of this iteration of the Policy Committee. And so, prior to the onset of the pandemic, we had had a number of select board policies related to the operation of the board and certain duties of the board, positions on the board that we had discussed in our previous iteration of the Policy Committee. And I believe we spoke, we discussed most, if not all of them, in a first reading by the then-iteration of the board. And the procedure that we were following, although not in place, but the procedure that we were following was the recommendation for policy adoption, which was to have a first reading of the board to discuss the policy and then to have a second reading of the board of the policy to have, you know, follow up for the discussion and then approve the policy to give, you know, to make sure that we have enough opportunity for feedback and vetting and before we adopt a policy. So, even though most of these, if not all of these that you have in front of you have been through a first reading of the prior board before the pandemic, Ms. Collins and I feel it makes sense to go through the full process. We do have a new board, and it has been a while. It was pre-pandemic. So, we think it makes sense to go through the full process. These policies that you have before you, I would say, I would say we had, in our meeting today, this morning, we did have some tweaks to them that I hoped to get out during the day, but was unable to. So I would say what you have in front of you is about 90%, 90%, 90% to 95% the view of the Policy Committee. So, it seems to me we could attack it in one of two ways. We could begin to have some discussion of some of these policies. There are 12 listed, and the last one includes several. Or, we could get written feedback from the members and incorporate that and discuss it at the Policy Committee meeting and then come back and have a fulsome discussion on the 28th. So, I'm agnostic as to what we do. You know, I'm happy to discuss them. I've had a little caffeine, so I'm happy to discuss some of them. But, again, happy not to as well. Happy not to as well. So that's my story.
Why don't we go to Ms. Collins first? Did you have anything you wanted to add as a member of the Policy Committee, Ms. Collins?
No, I don't. I'm happy to do either of those things as well.
I have some comments on some of them, and they're largely the same comments I had a couple of years ago. So, let me ask Mr. Doyle and Mr. Wells what their preferences. Would you like to get into a discussion of some of these tonight? Do you want to defer these to a future meeting? One option might be, we could provide written comments back to, I guess, well, we probably should designate one person that the Policy Committee could take up again before they come back to us. But what is the board's preferences? But I know two. And are there any that anyone would like to discuss tonight?
Madam Chair? My comment is simple. Are there any that we can do tonight that we can just get knock off of this list? Are there any that I?
I think what Mr. Zulus was suggesting was that this is considered the first reading, even though we've gone through many of them before. And those previous to Arthur's time on the board, so he wasn't part of that discussion. And we really probably should have the discussion anew, since we're a new board, since we last took this up. There are some, obviously, that are short, you know, the roles of the Chair, the Vice Chair, the Secretary. Those are probably easy ones. I had some concerns about whether we really need policies on our legal status and authority, or what the board's term of office is, or what the board's authority is. Because I think a lot of that's governed by statute. And, for example, and I think it's important that we have something on filling vacancies. But, you know, if there's a vacancy in the board in January, if it's a two-member board, that's one thing. But four members left on a five-member board, that's a little different. And probably wouldn't want to fill a vacancy four months out before an election. So I think there are some things that we still would like to discuss, at least I would like to bring up. So, because this is the first reading, I don't think we should vote any of them tonight, but we should decide whether we want to have a substantive discussion. Mr. Doyle, do you have a preference?
Madam Chair, I'd leave it up to the attorney, the board members. If we wrap this up on the 28th, that would be the completion of the first reading on that day. Is that how this should be interpreted?
Mr. Zulus?
I think that's right. We didn't put these on for a first reading tonight. We put these on just under a report from the Policy Committee. So we didn't refer to it on the agenda as a first reading. So I think, you know, I think my view is, we would still have to have a first reading and then a second reading.
And I think if we're not having a substantive discussion tonight, that makes sense, in addition to what Mr. Zulus said. So if we were to schedule this for the 28th or one of the dates in August, depending on how busy the 28th fills up, that would be the first.
Madam Chair, to Mr. Wells' point, maybe some of them could be completed by the 28th. In any event, now this could trail, but we probably target the 28th to try and complete the first reading.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Sound good to everyone? I see people nodding their heads, so I.
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, so why don't we then, we'll treat the 28th as the first reading for the policies. All right, thank you to the Policy Committee for meeting today and for your work on these items. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of the October 25th special town meeting. And I have a report on a few of these items for the board. So let me just update what I'm aware of and about some follow-up I've had with the Planning Board and the status of where they may or may not be at for October. And then, we can have a discussion. So, currently, we're looking, the bylaw requires a town meeting on October 25th. There have been a couple of years where we've canceled that town meeting. It's not being necessary. The Planning Board, as I did speak with the Chair of the Planning Board, Denny Swenson, after watching their meeting last week in which the hospital zoning for the memory care facility was discussed. And just as an outside observer, it appeared to me that there's a lot of balls in the air and a lot of things that need to be done for a project or a matter of that size in terms of zoning. And then, it was a question as to whether that really would be ready for an article to be submitted by July 28th when the warrant closes in pretty close to final form, because we're not really looking for placeholders or for just a topic to be submitted. But Warrant Committee is going to have to start their process in August. So I talked with the Chair, Denny Swenson, also with the Planning Director, and I did check in with Ned Corcoran, who was representing the memory care facility. And all were in agreement that if this board were to consider a winter town meeting for zoning articles, other than a tree amendment, which the Planning Board is intending to submit for October. There's not only the memory care that requires substantial amount of work for zoning, there's also the 5G small cell wireless facility, if we would like the Planning Board to take that up. Planning Board had also brought to the last town meeting in May, an accessory dwelling unit bylaw. That is not going to be going forward in October. It may be ready for a winter town meeting, but the Planning Board has not had a discussion about that since the May town meeting. They've had a number of other items on their agenda. including large projects such as site plan approval for four forty Granite Avenue. So the question would be whether our Board would like to consider in addition to the October meeting, rather than in place of it, a winter town meeting, probably in the timeframe of January of twenty twenty-two. And we could come up with a timeline, if, if the Board's agreeable, this, we could come up with a timeline for it, at which would give us a little bit, we would give the Planning Board and the planning staff addition, and let's, you know, admittedly, the planning staff is pretty busy these days on the forty B projects. We give them a little bit more time to work on some of these zoning proposals, including accessory dwelling units, the memory care zoning, and the small cell wireless facilities for 5G technology. So that was something that I wanted to bring up with our Board. In terms of articles that may be going forward in October, there may be some potential budget revisions, but I think we're going to have more detail on that at our meeting on the twentieth, next Tuesday. There's potentially a new article for the Randolph Avenue Sewer Betterment, which did go to town meeting a couple of years ago, that's still being vetted. So I'm not sure if that's going to be ready yet. The Department of Public Works has some amendments to the stormwater bylaw. Mr. Zulus can speak to this, but we've been told in the past that the Municipal Broadband Committee may be looking to the fall town meeting for an article for the next steps on that project. And there may be some other independent boards that are in committees that are looking for submitting articles to the October meeting. Deadline is still a couple of weeks away. I think we still have some that are, that may be coming in. We have not received any citizens petitions at this time. And our Board may have some others that members may want to bring up tonight or at our next two meetings. So I wanted to ask our Board to consider whether we should be planning a, a winter town meeting. Mr. Wells has his hand up. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As, as I listen, listen to you speak, my first question is, are you, are you considering an October and a winter town meeting, or just moving the October to the winter to January?
At least at this stage, because it does appear that we will have some articles to consider in October, and that may be ready, including the stormwater bylaw.
I agree. I, I think anything we can do to get off our plate before the annual town meeting next year, because as you know, if, if we, if we can get these done now, they've taken off things that could wind up on the May town meeting, which is, you know, we all know is busy enough as it is. So I would, I would be, whatever you decide, I will support. You want to have an October and a January? I think it's a viable decision to make at this point.
I, I left it with the Planning Board Chair that I would bring it up for discussion tonight, and we would get back to her and let her know whether, whether this Board was open to considering a winter town meeting, with the idea that we could come up with a date at a, at a later time, but just so that they have some sense of whether they can be working towards both October and January. It could be December, it could be January, February. Last year, we had late February for the fire building project. Late February is usually not too advisable, because the Warren Committee process, although the Warren Committee, you know, doesn't have the same amount of work on their plate that they did several, for decades until a few years ago. Part of that changed with the role of Town Administrator submitting a budget, but but still, there's a, there is a Warren Committee factor that we need to consider, the impact on their schedule.
Have you had a conversation with the Chair, George Asher, at all about this, or just, just with the Planning Board Chair?
No, at this stage, just with the Planning Board Chair and with Mr. Corcoran, since he's the Attorney for the memory care facility, which I believe was asking for the October, for an article to be presented by the Planning Board at the October meeting, not as a citizens petition, but for the Planning Board to develop zoning.
Okay.
Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, in listening, it seems that the January, January town meeting is, is a must. Is that a fair assumption?
I, I think the Planning Board would appreciate having some additional time to work on some zoning articles, given all that's the work that's on their plate. And, and there were residents who went to the Planning Board and felt, including an attorney for the Director of Butter to that site, who indicated that they felt the process was moving quickly, and that they needed some additional time to work on zoning and make sure that what is submitted for the warrant is something that's really ready for primetime, and is not going to have to get, be sent back for further study, or have an awful lot of revisions on the floor, which, you know, that always raises a scope issue. So I have not talked to Mr. Asher yet, but I wanted to see what our Board felt tonight. And as I said, we don't have to schedule a date. It's really just getting the temperature of the Board to see if we're amenable to even entertaining this. Ms. Collins and, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Doyle.
I, I was just going to say that I would lean in that direction without any question. And by the meeting that we have on the twentieth of this month, might we know more as to whether or not there should be a recommendation for one in October as well?
I think we'll know by the twenty eighth. I'm not sure about the twentieth.
Okay. All right.
Right, Ms. Collins and then Mr. Jenny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'd like to see us put together a, a winter town meeting, if we could, because we, we really do need to see some zoning move forward. We keep having residents and among them, you know, our, our own warrant committee members concerned about things like, you know, increasing revenue, available revenue and housing, and some, some, some other, some other issues, you know, things like the tree bylaw, very important. So I, I think the more we can do to move zoning forward and keep it out of the May town meeting, or make space for something that really needs to be there, I'm all for that.
Mr. Dennehy?
Yes, Madam Chair, you, you brought up two, two very good points. Both the DPW articles, both the Sewer Betterment article, which has some complexities involved in it, it may not be ready for October town meeting, and the stormwater bylaw, which Town Council is reviewing based on comments that came back from the Attorney General's Office when it approved the amendment, might not have some time sensitivity. I, I will add to Mr., remember Vice Chair Doyle's comments. The Community Preservation Committee might have something ready in January that could, that could, you know, afford the five hundred thousand dollars we talked about earlier this evening. So again, the, I think the DPW articles could be, could be, and might have to be pushed out to, to January, so, a winter meeting, so.
Okay, so that's probably even more reason to consider. We're, we're out on the twenty eighth. What's the number of articles? Are they all really time-sensitive? But we have a couple more weeks. On that, and we'll see if any citizens articles or anything else should come in from any of the Boards. Anyone else on this topic? Mr. Zulus?
Just to add, you know, I think, I think Arthur's construct is, is, would work well assuming a January or winter town meeting, and then, and then doing an October town meeting, if it makes sense to do both. And I can say from, from the Broadband Committee, I think there is a, a very high likelihood that there will be an article. But I don't think that it makes a difference whether it's October. I think it could wait till January. If we have an October, October meeting, I think we'll be ready. But I wouldn't have scheduled a meeting just for that purpose. I don't think we want to wait on the broadband issue until May, but I think it can wait from October to January.
Okay, I, I think that this is enough for me to at least get back to the Planning Board, let them know our Board is entertaining, or is willing to go forward with a winter town meeting that we would schedule at a later date, and we'll see. We'll, we'll see what we, what the universe of articles may be for October. Mr. Dennehy?
Madam Chair, it looked like Ned Corcoran, who's in the attendees, had, had his hand raised. I know his hand has come down now, it's back up again, sorry.
Okay, all right. So I brought Mr. Corcoran's name up, so why don't we move Mr. Corcoran up to panelist, and Mr. Corcoran, we, if you would, if you could give us your comments, but be brief, given that it's nine fifteen, and we still have a number of items on our agenda that we'd like to get to. So thank you for joining us tonight. Can you hear us, Mr. Corcoran?
Yeah, yes, yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I know you, you and I spoke. I, I, I think the idea of, of having a winter town meeting is spot on. It is very difficult to, we took advantage of a window of opportunity to try to move zoning to October, but that going from a May through the summer to, to October is really a fast pace, and I think all parties would benefit from the extra time available to it, if, if the Board were to adopt the idea of, of a January town meeting. So I would wholeheartedly urge, urge this Board to adopt that. And I think it would be in the best interest of all parties involved, particularly with respect to the hospital property rezoning, if, if that were to happen. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Corcoran. I think we have a consensus in the Board that we're going to go forward with January, and we'll see where we're at in, for October in two weeks. Okay, thank you, everyone. Item ten is an update on the forty B projects, and the reason this is on our agenda, I think we mentioned at one of our previous meetings, that two of the projects are, are winding down before the Board of Appeals. An item A is five eighty-two Blue Hill Avenue and the Ice House. There was a hearing this evening, I don't know if it's still going on regarding five eighty-two Blue Hill Avenue, and I understand our Public Works Director, Chase Berkeley, was going to be meeting with the Board of Appeals to go over some stormwater issues. That, that process is winding down, and the question is, does our Board wish to make any comments on that project? Two of the Planning Board members attended the last Board of Appeals meeting and did offer some comments on the area, on the issues of the topography of the site and construction management plan, some other items that are, that were more technical in nature. This is a redesigned site, so the application that's before the Board of Appeals has changed quite a bit over time in response to work that peer review commenters, the peer reviewers have made, the applicant has responded to some of the peer review contractor comments by proposing to preserve at least the majority portion of the mansion, and to preserve the garden, the historic gardens, and to redesign the building so that it's now two wings, rather than a large block building. It's now two wings on either side of the, the mansion building and the garden. So we have the redesigned plans. The question would be, would our Board want to offer comments? We have, I think it might have been in our retreat, or one of our recent meetings, we talked about the fact that we probably would want to submit comments on the various forty B projects. Mr. Zawinski informed me that their next meeting on five eighty-two Blue Hill Avenue would be Wednesday, the twenty first. We're scheduled to meet again on Tuesday, the twentieth. So one thought would be for, we could either post notice for the entire Board to go to the Board of Appeals meeting, if we'd like to do that, make it a all of us to attend. We could take, we, we'd have one person represent our, our Board at that meeting, or we could do with the Planning Board, and have two people represent the Board. In that case, it was the Chair, Denny Swenson, and Cheryl Tobias, who's a member of the Planning Board. And we may want to consider what our comments would be, and, and I think we should, assuming that we want to make comments, I think we should talk a little bit tonight about what comments we may wish to, or what, at least what topics we may wish to focus our comments on. And then with, so perhaps we can have a discussion on that, and then just briefly with respect to the Ice House at forty-five, forty-seven Blue Hills Parkway, that project is also winding down. The, at the last Board of Appeals meeting last week, the three members of the panel really weighed in a little bit on the fact that they thought that project had moved in the right direction. Mr. Leonard, the Chair of the Panel, gave him two thumbs up, which I think the developer really appreciated, and, and that the Ice House project is one where this, there has not been an amount, a large amount of neighborhood testimony. The developer's been very cooperative and responsive to peer review comments, to comments from the town. And Mr. Zawinski and I discussed today the fact that he, he thought it may not be necessary for our Board to go into a Board of Appeals meeting to attend that, and I suggested, and I want to him, and I want to suggest to our Board, that we may want to consider writing a letter to the Board of Appeals. Their next meeting on the Ice House is Thursday, the twenty-second. So we meet on the twentieth. Little Avenue is on the Wednesday night, Ice House is on Thursday night. We have a little bit of time to finalize our comments next Tuesday, if we want to touch on the areas to comment on tonight. And, and we may want to consider whether to write a letter. I, I think it would be worth calling out that, to acknowledge the efforts of Mr. Bosworth on the Ice House to respond not only to the peer reviewers, but to this Board over a year ago, when Mr. Zulus was the Chair, Ms. Collins was the Vice Chair, and I know you met with him to ask that commercial space be restored to the original design. I saw a comment on Facebook not too long ago saying that there's, it's all housing, there's no commercial space there, and that's just wrong. So we need to get some of that information out. I think the Ice House is, I think, well, at different times have said that this is a good project, and Mr. Bosworth has really been very responsive. So we, we may want to put together a short letter acknowledging the progress that's been made and, and the result there. I know the Conservation Commission has also had a lot of i- input into the Ice House project. So I want to open it up to the members of the Board to see what, in particular, what, what everyone thinks regarding commenting on these two proposals. Mr. Zulus?
So, Madam Chair, I think we should comment. And I would, I would leave it to the discretion of the Chair, because I think the Chair should speak on behalf of the Board, either in person or by letter, or we could all sign the letter, or, or both. I believe it's the discretion of the Chair. And in terms of the substance, my view is that I am supportive of the Ice House project for a lot of the reasons you mentioned, and I think, you know, this Board may want to take a position, one way or the other, on that. And I think while five eighty-two Blue Hill Ave has had improvements, barely, fairly significant improvements, I still have concerns and reservations. And so that, that's my view of the substance, but I think the Board should take a consensus view on both projects and communicate that to the Board of Appeals, either by, in writing, or, you know, by a statement from the Chair or both.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted a little on my hands, so I didn't leave it up. So I, I agree, Mr. Zulus. I do support the Ice House. I've been reading a lot of stuff today. I'm trying to catch up with ten days of things here, so my, was my understanding previously that the Ice House had secured a tenant for the commercial space. Are you saying that's gone now? There's no longer there?
No, no, I didn't say anything about the commercials, just that the fact that there, there is commercial space at the Ice House. I think there's been some confusion among the public that it's, it's simply housing through the efforts of, you know, our former Chair, Mr. Zulus, and Vice Chair, Ms. Collins, at the time. There was a meeting with Mr. Bosworth, both of you could speak better this, to this than I can, but Mr. Bosworth was receptive to the town wanting to do, do something a little more close, a little closer to the original zoning for that site, which did include some commercial space.
Right, because there wasn't, oh, sorry, go ahead, Michael, you go first.
Well, I was just gonna, I would just add that Cheryl Tobias of the Planning Board was involved in those discussions, and very helpful in, in the redesign of the project and, and to having them change the project even before it got to the Board of Appeals. So I just wanted to know.
This is the Ice House we're referring to?
Yes.
Yes, a- a- and there was a tenant who was very interested, that we met with Allison, Jen McCullough, myself, and I believe that carried over to Mr. Zulus's time as Chair, who I, I, I thought that Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Bosworth had secured him as the tenant for that commercial spaces. So we don't know if that's still, my instinct is it's true.
They may have. I don't think any of that is during the Board of Appeals process, because that's a little bit outside their scope, but.
Okay, and to the second point, I also agree with Michael on, I just quickly perused the new plans on five eighty-two. I still do have a look, even though it's, it's come down significantly, I, I do have concerns, but, and I, I would also leave that to you, Madam Chair, to to speak for us on both of these issues.
Okay, Ms. Collins, has your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree, I think that we should, should comment. I, I think a letter is, is fine for the Ice House. I think, too, we, we might have some comments that we made initially, you know, rolling off the P L process when the application dropped to, at the Board of Appeals, that might be helpful. So I can, I can pull those and send them to you, if that's helpful. And as far as five eighty-two Blue Hill Ave, you know, I agree there. I think it's, I think it's important to talk about the things that have, you know, changed at a high level, like if we, I think we should keep our, our comments a little more high level than the Planning Board. We, we have sort of, we do different things. But, but, so to talk in general about the, the change and the movement on it, and then the things that still concern us, like the feasibility. I, I understand that stormwater looks like it's going to be a net positive coming off the, the, the project now, but, but that feasibility piece and, and also the impact of construction on, on their planned stormwater measurements, because I understand it's a pretty complex, unusual, but good natural, more natural system. So I, 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 I think, I think that's important, and and other comments that, that Madam Chair, you think would be important for us to talk. and other comments that Madam Chair you think would be important for us to talk about, whether it be housing in general or or something.
Okay, so I think I hear a consensus from the board that we we would submit a letter to the, for the Ice House project. So one thought would be that since we're meeting on Tuesday evening, we, I could work on a draft circulated before the meeting. We'll collect any comments at the meeting, we'll make any changes, and then hopefully we can get that submitted for Thursday. For the Little Avenue project, where I I think it probably makes sense for us not to do a letter, but to go in and present our comments, which I anticipate would be very brief, high level comments, as as Ms. Collins said, and not get into the level of technical detail that the planning board did, because some of the issues that they were raising are the types of issues that come up during their public hearings, certain special permits. One thought that I have is to, given that the planning board had two members go, I would like to see whether the board would think that perhaps Ms. Collins and I, especially Ms. Collins, as the chair of the Housing Committee, has been very involved in housing, affordable housing issues over the last few years. I I think it's important for us to mention to the Board of Appeals that creating additional affordable housing is a priority for the community, and I think we should speak to the efforts that the town is trying to do on on a lot of different fronts to create additional housing and recognize the benefits that affordable housing at that site would provide, while also bringing up issues about the intensity of the use. Is there any preservation for this historic garden that that the developer is going to keep on the site, but how is it going to be maintained with 88 units on the site? And and I think that we can, and if that's agreeable to the rest of the board, then perhaps Ms. Collins and I can work with Mr. Zawinski to maybe other comments that other department heads have made that we want to reiterate. We did that on the 69371 Randolph Avenue. Board testimony reiterated a lot of the department comments. And that that may be something we can do in the next few days. And again, prepare and bring something to the board on Tuesday, the 20th, that we would present the following evening.
I'd be fine with that, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, just one quick question. Meeting on the 20th, is this, I think this is a special meeting for a specific purpose. As you know, I've been away, so I.
Yes, you've been, right. We, so the board met Friday morning and with the Finance Committee, and we scheduled it at that meeting. I'm sorry, I thought that was being communicated to you, Mr. Wells, so that's communicated that. I apologize for that. The idea was that we needed to schedule something for the, for the 40B.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm fine with that. No, I just want to know what it was. Thank you. We're good. Keep going.
We may, we may have some additional items now to add to that agenda, so, as as usually happens. Mr. Doyle, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to add my concurrence to the letter on the Ice House, and you're probably well ahead of me, but one of the things that I would recommend that we stress in there is the way in which all of the parties involved have was it collaborated, good faith, positive orientation. It's a model of an exemplar to be followed, and I think it would be serving the town well in other instances if we were to, in this letter, accentuate that.
Okay, thank you. So the goal would be to circulate a draft, hopefully by the weekend, so that everyone will have a little time to look at it, and we'll revise it Tuesday night. Mr. Zulus.
Just, and and to that end, I think to show support for that, if if possible, to have some in-person representation at the Thursday night meeting to show support for those kinds of efforts. And I'd be happy to do that. I don't mean to impose on you, but I think, I think it'd be, I think, you know, it's, it's, I think, having that kind of in-person support would be, would be useful.
Okay. That sounds good. All right, so in speaking with Mr. Zawinski today, he did ask me to put the East Milton Residences 40B project on a future agenda item. He said that the there are some revisions coming to that project, and one of the problems that he's been encountering with the planning board comments and our comments is that as revisions are coming through, departments are getting them, and they're able to just come to a meeting whenever the Board of Appeals needs them, but to get the planning board or our board in, we need to have the latest designs and then have a board meeting about it and come up with what our comments are, and as we can see, that's going to take us two meetings. So he would like us to try to get that on an agenda early so that we have time to consider it. I also put on the agenda tonight just a brief status report on the other 40B cases, and we'll touch on them very quickly, given the lateness of the hour. 16 Amor Road and 936 Brush Hill Road have been filed with the Board of Appeals. There is going to be, or there has been a procedural first hearing on both of those projects, but they are being continued until later dates, because the town has more than three applications with more than 300 units pending before the Board of Appeals at this time. So that's been explored with the town's attorney, Johanna Schneider, and the planning staff, and it's been discussed with the applicant's attorneys, the same applicant for both of these, as well as for two of the other pending projects. So so that's the status on that. They have been filed, but nothing is going to be happening on those, other than possibly engaging peer reviews to start the process, but no public testimony, no consideration of the merits of those cases until until some of the other applications that are pending get decided. And we fall below that threshold, three applications and more than 300 units. And then 648 and 652 Canton Avenue. The plan for 648 Canton Avenue has been revised. We have new design. 652 is now proposed to be combined with 648, and the hearings on that project are not going to resume until after Labor Day, sometime in September, and I do not have the exact date. But the the individual application for 652 Canton Avenue has been withdrawn, and 648 will be going forward with a redesigned plan before that panel. That's already started having many meetings and is now gotten an extension from the applicant, I think, until December, and will be taking, those hearings will resume after Labor Day. So that's the status report on the other pending projects. Anyone have any issue, any comments or any questions or thoughts on those? Okay, then. All right, some more to come on Tuesday night on the 40B. So now we have a couple of appointments to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, Maridh Doherty.
I'm sure I would move to appoint Maridh Doherty of 177 Canton Avenue to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
Do we have a second? I just noticed that we don't have a term for her appointment, and I I don't recall offhand if that's a one-year committee or, same thing, I think the Historical Commission is multiple years, which is our next item. Three years, okay. So Shade Tree, I think that's one year.
I think you're right.
Okay, so, Mr. Doyle, if you just accept a friendly amendment, that'll be for one year, expiring in July of 2022.
Certainly. Second.
It's seconded any discussion, if not all in favor, and this is a roll call vote, since we're on Zoom tonight. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, number 12, Historical Commission, Mary Noble. Nice to see Mary being nominated for this. She's attended so many different board meetings in town and has been very engaged.
I'm sure I will move to appoint Mary B. Noble of 1372 Brush Hill Road to the Historical Commission. The three-year term?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's been seconded any, for any discussion, other than thank you to Mary and to Maridh Doherty. Then all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Number 14 is a discussion in the take rate survey, and back to Mr. Zulus, this relates to municipal broadband.
Madam Chair, did we skip item 13, or we're deferring item 13?
I'm sorry, we did. You're right. My error. Number 13 is a discussion of a, an agreement relating to the disposal of trash and recyclables, and it's with a company known as Recollect, to get the exact agreement out. So, Mr. Dennehy, would you like to address this item?
Certainly, certainly, Madam Chair. In my capacity in Boston, we engaged a similar company. What these people do is they create an app for your smartphone or computer. Basically, the town pays a subscription fee. The subscription fee is based on service population. So for Milton, this, this would be a $7,000 subscription. And what they do is, is it's a very interactive and dynamic app. The subscriber, and it's, it's free to the subscriber, the the end user. But essentially, Mike Dennehy would sign up for 12 Rose Street. It would tell me when my trash day is. It would send me notifications if my trash day was delayed. Any special collection, whether it's Christmas trees or yard waste schedules, I would be notified with a notification. They have a feature called the Waste Wizard, so if if a constituent is confused how to get rid of a dishwasher, or can I put this paint out on the curb? It's a brilliant app that's thoroughly used. Those in the in the viewing audience that want to take a look at it. Boston's is called Trash Day. You simply download the app, you put your address in, and click what you want notifications for, and it pretty much does, does everything for the end user. And additionally, it allows them to handpick, you know, if you type in Styrofoam, it tells you that Styrofoam is not a recyclable, but has to go in the trash. So it's a really dynamic app that a lot of communities are using. This subscription service agreement would be for a year. I think something that that the town should really take a look at it. The idea is to make sure that people are recycling things that should be recycled and not putting, basically putting things in the proper stream that they belong in when it comes to collection at the curb. I can answer any questions that you might have. It's, it it's very, very useful. A lot of people live on their phones these days, and, you know, we, we had an incident last week where a week ago, when 4th of July fell on a Monday, this would notify you that your trash day was delayed, and then just, it's very user-friendly.
Any questions for Mr. Dennehy?
No, I just want to, Madam Chair, if I may say, thank you for bringing this forward. I think that from a yard waste day management alone, it's going to be a great bonus.
Yeah, I mean, we collect 15 weeks a year. It goes off and on in the in the summer months. So, yeah, it's it's very good. And I have to thank Erica Dedenato and Chase Berkeley in in the Department of Public Works for for bringing this to me. I kind of had forgotten about it in in Boston and how useful it was for the end user. And ultimately, again, if we can get people to recycle more, we're greening our community, and and if we, you know, if we can take yard waste out of the trash stream by notifying people, that saves tax dollars. So the idea is to save tax dollars and and green our community. So, thank you for that, Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Dennehy is the funding source for the DPW budget?
Yes, yeah.
All right, anything else from Mr. Dennehy? If not, we have a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the proposed agreement with SSA dated July 1, 2021, to cover the subscription to services for the town of Milton.
Motion's made and seconded any discussion, if not all in favor. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Sounds terrific, yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes, looking forward to using it.
Mr. Wells?
Absolutely.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Now we are on to the take rates for the municipal broadband.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before the end of the fiscal year, FY '21 fiscal year, on June 30th, this board, by unanimous unanimous vote, authorized the chair to sign a reserve, to execute a reserve fund transfer for up to $29,999 for a take rate survey for municipal broadband. The the warrant committee subsequently authorized its chair to sign a reserve fund transfer for up to $30,000 for the same purpose. We have since been told by the Director of Finance that the better practice is to not only sign the contract in the year in which you have, in which you expend the reserve fund transfer, but also to have the services completed during the year of the reserve fund transfer. So that reserve fund transfer for FY '21 has not been executed, and the request is that this board, in lieu of that, approve, because we can't delegate, it's not the end of the fiscal year for FY '22, but approve a reserve fund transfer for FY '22 for the same purpose. And we'll similarly, similarly, if approved by this board, be seeking the authority to do the same thing from the warrant committee. It's no dollars out, because those, the $30,000 that was not used from the reserve fund transfer from this year will roll over into free cash for next year, so that if if it's needed to 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 fill in the reserve fund for next, for FY '22, that could happen. So it's, so it's the same, using it for the same purpose, same need is there. It's just a different bucket of money because of the best practice as as directed by our Director of Finance, so.
Okay, Mr. Wells has his hand up.
I hear, Mr. Zulus, my concern was, this was easy for us to fund in '21 because it was unforeseen. If we rolled over to '22, it's still been unforeseen, and this, this created a challenge with the warrant committee. My thought is maybe, could we, Mr. Dennehy might be able to answer this, could we encumber a '21 reserve fund? Something that we've already approved.
No, we, Richard, we can't do that, because that's what we thought we could do, and that's what we were trying to do, and the Finance Director has said that, you know, the contract would have needed to have been signed prior to.
Prior to July 1st, correct? I get it. So that's, if we can do it, I'm all for it. I just, I just see a challenge, but let's, let's, let's go for it. Let's try.
And I will say, Richard, that it is just as unforeseen today and for FY '22 as it was on June 24th. So that hasn't changed. The fact that it's unforeseen, and the need is there, and we have the vendor ready to go.
Well, in addition, the reserve fund is extraordinary or unforeseen, so I think we need to run through that test.
Okay, all right, I'm fine with that. I just, I just didn't want to seek a challenge and then make an uphill battle for Michael, that's all. Okay, I'm fine with it.
We have, I think, I think we have the Director of Finance, and I think we have Town Council, everybody on board on this.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and, you know, related, related, the good news is we haven't had to tap the reserve fund, so.
I know.
It just was managed by all the town budgets. That's not on our agenda tonight, but I think we should have a discussion about that in an upcoming meeting that, you know, I think, I think that shows that town management has managed the reserve fund and the departmental budgets well this year, that the entire amount is going to flow into the free cash calculation.
That's a good thing.
So for the, do we want, so this is not really on for reserve fund transfer, but it is on for a discussion and approval of funding. So I think if we have a sense from our board that we're going to paperwork for reserve funds submitted onto the warrant committee, that would enable us to let the warrant committee know, which is, they are meeting on Monday. Mr. Zulus is willing to go to the warrant committee meeting and present this to them on Monday evening.
I think we should take a vote, Madam Chair. I make a motion to approve the 30,000 as reserve fund transfer in FY '22. I don't know if this specifically for this, for this purpose, the purpose that we funded FY '21. You can add, you can, and Michael, you can put the words in that you want.
That sounds good to me.
All right, I think that we may need to do an actual, a second vote, which we could schedule for Tuesday. I think we could approve that we, you know, the funding for this and designate the reserve fund, but fill up, we have to fill out paperwork for the reserve.
Okay.
The actual request could get approved on the 20th. So long as we have a, you know, an agreement that that's how we want to approach it, we can, Mike, Mike can convey that to the warrant committee.
Okay.
So do we have anyone who's going to second Richard's motion, which I think is to approve the funding, and we'll, we'll submit the actual reserve fund request at a subsequent meeting? Okay, any discussion? Then all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And Mr. Wells?
No, of course, yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. The next item is a, is a ratification of a proclamation for Jack Riley of St. Agatha's Parish that Mr. Wells asked us to issue. And as is often the case, when we get these requests for letters or proclamations for birthdays or other events, they don't always coincide with our meeting schedule. So tonight, we will be ratifying something that, I want to recognize Susie Stewart, who did a lot of work putting this proclamation together. So thank you to Susie for all of her efforts to coordinate it. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, if I just, from, 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 I'll make the motion to approve the the proclamation for Jack Riley, the Finance and Operations Director of St. Agatha's Parish, after his well-deserved and well-earned retirement. As we saw in the proclamation, Jack has done, has 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 lived the life of selflessness. He may be a layperson, but he's given back so much to so many in need. I I'm very grateful that we were able to do this for him.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We now have three one-day local license requests from Historic New England.
I'll make a motion to approve all three of them, and you can list the dates.
All right, the dates are July 23rd, August 27th, and September 17th, 2021, and therefore sunset and tour. The dates are July twenty-third, August twenty-seventh, and September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, and therefore sunset and tour events at the Eustace Estate.
Second.
Any discussion on these? All in favor, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, that took here three items.
Yes, Madam Chair, I don't think I voted, yes. That's okay.
Okay, and myself, yes. The next item is an acceptance of a pilot payment from Curry College in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. I thank Curry College for their continuing cooperation with the pilot program and their generosity.
Thanks.
Collins was about to make a motion.
Yes, I move to accept the payment in lieu of taxes from Curry College and say thank you as well.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just, Madam Chair, I just want to echo, and I've said this many times. We are so fortunate to have President Ken Quigley as a partner. Since the day he took over twenty-something years ago. He has brought that college to be such a positive jewel entity of this community and he has been our partner. And all the, all the departments in this town in so many ways. He never changes and on light of this, he's had a very difficult nineteen months as the president of a college, as we all, after you know very well, the difficulties in higher education right now. I believe, Madam Chair, he's, he's, he's increased it from last year or is it this, he's increased it from two years ago. So thank you very much, the president.
I don't think we voted that one yet, right? So, okay, so Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Absolutely. I thought Mr. Zulus was gonna vote no.
And myself, yes. Okay. Meeting minutes is the next item on our agenda and I have to confess, I have not had a chance to review the meeting minutes. Would anybody mind if we deferred those until the twentieth? Okay, and, and thank you to Susie for all of your work putting those together. Item twenty-one is the Town Administrator's Annual Review and Mr. Zulus took this one, is the, the review is handled by the former chair of the board and we're a little bit late doing this one. So there's a lot of things going on in the spring. So Mr. Zulus, I'll go to you on this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my, my responsibility for the delay here. But here's where we are. The member, each member of the board provided feedback on the performance of evaluation. I incorporated those, all that feedback in each of the categories. The, the listed categories with a numerical score, I went with a majority and then I included comments, included comments. I discussed the review with Mr. Dennehy today and then published it after that to the board in. As, as set forth in the procedure. The procedure provides that Mr. Dennehy gets a week after seeing the report and going through it, which we did to other evaluation, which we did today. Before it is to be discussed publicly. My understanding is that Mr. Dennehy may be willing to waive that week so we can review it tonight. However, I recognize that since Mr. Dennehy and I only discussed it this morning, the board only received it after that. So the board may not be prepared to proceed, but my understanding is Mr. Dennehy's willing to proceed tonight if that is the will of the board. Or we can do it at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, what, what is the sense of the board? Mr. Dennehy has his hand up. I'm good, Mr. Dennehy.
I, I will waive that one week, Madam Chair. So if the board feels comfortable this week, fine, if not, at a later meeting, but.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Do any of my colleagues have any thoughts on whether we should go forward tonight? Does anyone, has everyone had a chance to read? The composite review, for lack of a better term, that Mr. Zulus put forward?
Madam Chair, I have not. I just haven't had enough time since I got back. I have not.
I think I see members indicating that. So what's, do we want to put this off until the twentieth?
Fine with that.
Arthur, Melinda, everyone, okay with putting this off? Mr. Dennehy, you okay with putting this off after you just waived the week? All right, he's giving us the thumbs up, so.
It's good that he waves the week because the twentieth is within a weekend, is, is, is less than a week, so.
Okay, fair point.
I'm fine.
Okay. Okay, well, just as I needed to defer the minutes, I, I think we've, you know, if people haven't had a chance to review them, it's understandable. So let's go on to the town. Well, thank you, Mr. Zulus and Mr. Dennehy for.
Thank you.
For, for getting us this far in the process. Town Administrator's Report, and we have electronic warrant delivery on the topics.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So the town was notified, Attorney General's Office sent a letter to. A wonderful Madam Clerk, Susan Galvin, on the seventh, notifying us that. If you remember Article Five, which was, which established the Community Preservation Act in Milton, was previously accepted. And, and sent to the town as Article Five from July of twenty twenty special town meeting. The other eight articles of them, Articles One, Four, Six, and Eight were approved on, on the seventh by the AG's office. Article Two and Three, they're gonna get back to the clerk in September. They've asked for a further extension on those two articles. But Article Eight was the electronic delivery of the warrant, which was, had very robust debate on, on the floor of town meeting or remotely on the floor of town meeting. And it has been approved by, it has been approved by the Attorney General's Office and the town can, can proceed as it sees fit. So I know there's been some conversations with Town Council regarding this matter. The bylaw does stipulate that this would go into effect on, on January first of twenty twenty-two. But, Madam Chair, if you want to just elaborate on, on the discussion that took place and the reason that we, we put a date in there. You know, it was, it was approximately eighteen months. Turn around, well, eighteen months between January of twenty twenty-two and, and July of twenty twenty, when we, when we, when we had the remote meeting. So if you just want to elaborate on, on that and why we picked that date and, and, you know, there was, there's been a delay in, 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 in many forms of government and business and industry. And I think that in the time it took, the Attorney General's Office, I think, to get it back to us.
I'm saying, I think none of us were anticipating that last summer, that it would be a year before we would hear whether this bylaw is approved. And one of the issues that came up at town meeting largely through two town meeting members, Joe Sloan and Roy Walker. Was that we want to give residents of the town enough notice that the warrant in paper format will not be delivered to every household, but would be available electronically. So the question I think for our board is, obviously, this doesn't apply to the October special town meeting, but. Under the bylaw, would start applying to the January town meeting and the next May's town meeting. Town Council has said, look, there's nothing in this new bylaw that prevents the town from still delivering paper copies. It, it is no longer required. So the question I think for us to consider, and we don't have to consider this tonight, is. Do we want to extend for a little bit further, whether it's January or maybe the annual town meeting in May? Some period of time, do we even want to consider continuing to print them for a short period? I don't, I don't think anyone's suggesting for a long period because the intent of town meeting was clear to go in this form, in this direction. But to give residents sufficient time to prepare for. How they're going to receive this information, get everybody who wants to be on the, the email distribution list that the town has. To have some, whether it's, definitely we need notice in the warrant, we talked about that last summer. But in public notice to let people know that there's a change coming. So again, we can take that up at a future date, but it's, it's good news that the Attorney General's approved this for us and it is a modernization of the bylaw. And it is consistent with what other communities have done and will, will save some money too on the delivery and the printing. So it's, it's overall good news. It's just a matter of, given that it, it's a year later that we're getting this approved, do we want to consider an extension?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You said it much better.
No, I, I thought you did fine describing it, Mr. Dennehy. Oh, you just froze up. I'm not sure if, if you can hear us. I don't know if there was anything else you had for your report. Okay, I think we have Mike Bennett.
Oh, I'm back, yeah, sorry, I froze. Madam Chair, you said that much better than I would, so thank you. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, all right. The old, I was, I did, was not going to have a report, but I, I thought I would just mention that today, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council had a webinar on diversifying municipal boards and committees. And we had really good representation for Milton. There were, there were nine or ten communities in the region and. Melinda Collins, Arthur Doyle and I were there from the board. Mr. Dennehy attended Ada Rose Marin from the Milton School Committee and Pat Lattimore from our Equity and Justice Committee. So we had, they, it was a presentation and then they broke everyone up into working groups and Ada and I were in one group and I'm sure others were in other groups. And it was just a good presentation on, in networking on how we might consider, what we can learn from other communities and how we might consider tackling that topic. So maybe a, a discussion for a future, future agenda at some point. And, and it was good to see the Equity and Justice Committee represented. But I have, I have nothing else to report. Does anyone have a report this evening, Mr. Doyle?
At this time, Madam Chair.
Mr. Zulus.
Madam Chair, just one thing, I, I think we could probably each week recognize the efforts of the Milton Police Department, the Milton Fire Department and DPW and the other departments of town. But I think it's important to acknowledge, particularly this week, the work of the Milton Police Department. We did have a violent crime and murder in this town over the weekend and within twenty-four hours, a suspect was in custody. And so I think, I think we, again, as always, all great debt of gratitude to the Milton Police Department and the fine work that they continue to do.
That's good. I'm glad you brought that up. That's, that was good work by the police department. So thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention. Ms. Collins.
No report.
Mr. Wells.
No report tonight. I just, oh, Mr. Zulus's comments though, as far as the work of the police department. Homicide investigations are really, can be very challenging and fortunately, they are very quick and able to make a, an arrest on that.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And public comment response, any, any response to public comments evening? Or at any future, not future, past meetings. Seeing them, future agenda items, I, I want to confirm that we all have the same dates for the future agendas. I believe we're meeting on July twentieth and then July twenty-eighth. We were scheduled to meet August eleventh and twenty-fifth, but we were going to reschedule the eleventh and I don't, I think we were looking at the fourth or the fifth and I don't know if we've actually pinned that down. The fourth would be a Wednesday.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes, thank you.
I have the third, I have the third down.
I just third.
The third or the fourth, but I had it set for the third.
Okay, the third is a Tuesday. Is everyone, everyone on the board available on August third?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I am as well, Madam Chair. I'd, I'd be more comfortable with the third than anything later that, that's Pan Mass Challenge Week, so I can definitely do the third.
Okay, so we're meeting on Tuesday, the twentieth of July, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth of July, Tuesday, August third, and then Wednesday, August twenty-fifth. And with respect to future agenda items, we're going to work with Judy Barrett to see if we can get a report on the East Milton Working Group on one of those summer agenda items. We also are hoping to schedule an informational session from the Conservation Commission. Does, and any, and there's obviously a number of other items that Mr. Dennehy and, and Miss Stewart have on the ongoing list. Is there anything new that needs to be added? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Community happenings, if you have anything to, now, Ms. Collins.
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't quick enough thinking. I, I, I would like to have a Governor Stotin item.
Okay.
Thank you, on Town Farm.
Okay. Okay, community happenings, any, anything to announce?
I have one, Madam Chair. I, I just want to, I don't know if I did this, I just want to thank you to everyone, Mr. Dennehy, all the town apartments. All the residents and people who came to Milton Music Fest, we had well over three thousand people over the two days and it was just amazing turnout. Especially something that was done in four short weeks, put it together. So thank you to everyone for the help on that.
Okay. All right, then, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Not all in favor, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, so we'll see everyone on Tuesday, the twentieth of July. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Susie, and thank you to Milton Access Television.